I gave my apologies, rush, rush, rush and make lots of mistakes. Anyway, I like to call to order the Special Operations Committee meeting for the county of Ranford on November the 24th at 8:32 a.m. Are there any disclosures of particular interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, I need a mover and secander for the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Hunt, Councillor Bennett, all in favor. It's carried, Mr. Perkins, please.
Chair.
Councillor Lynch has got his hand up.
Yes, the land acknowledgement.
Hello. Sorry. Really, really messed up this morning, just rushed, 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 my apologies. As we gather this morning, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of committee in our communities that we are meeting on the traditional territory of the Algonquin people. We would like to thank the Algonquin people and express our respect and support for their rich history, and we are extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. We also thank all the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. As a rookie, Mr. Morrow, can I proceed now? Mr. Perkins, please.
Good morning, and thank you, Chair, and through you to committee, Mr. Hanrath has this item, and he'll present it for us, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanrath, please.
Do we need a mover and secander to bring it on the floor, it's a bylaw item, Chair?
Mover and secander, please. Councillor Lynch, Councillor Keller.
Thank you, Chair, through you to committee, the recommendation here is that the Operations Committee recommend that County Council pass a bylaw to acquire lands located in part of Lot 18, concession 13, in the geographic township of Sebastopol, in the township of Bonnershire Valley, described as parts 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, and 9 on Plan 49R19917, from Chris Camille and Lena Farias, for the amount of $976.08, and further that parts 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, and 9 on Plan 49R19917 be dedicated as part of the public highway upon registration of the transfer documents. The background is there, but in summary, this is a purchase for the road widening along Foyneout Road. There are many more to come, but this one has a severance that's depending on the purchase going through, so it's going through ahead of time.
Thank you. Questions or comments from committee? Councillor Lynch.
Thank you, Chair, through you to Taylor, how many more of these things do we have? And do we have a timeline?
So I'm waiting on, sorry, through Chair to Councillor Lynch, I'm waiting on two right now to finalize or agree in principle, and a number of signed documents to be submitted. There's more than 20 in all that will be purchased from.
Thank you.
Warden Robinson.
Thank you, Chair, so knowing that through you to Taylor, do you still see that we are going to start moving forward on the 5/12 in the spring?
Through Chair to Warden Robinson, yes, that is the plan. These, these two are still discussing with me, and then I'm at the point now where I've contacted our design consultant to see if we can design around them, or find a different design around them. Once that's in place, we'll have the close cut clearing proceed, the purchases will be finalized, and we'll start on road reconstruction.
Thank you, and then I saw Councillor Hunt, and then Mr. Morrow.
Thank you. Through you to Taylor, Chair, where we come up to the little square that's in the middle of this property, is that owned by someone else?
Through Chair to Councillor Hunt, yes, that is owned by Bell Canada.
Okay, and we haven't yet acquired that?
We have an agreement with Bell Canada.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Morrow, please.
Thank you, Chair, and through you to committee, I do want to advise committee that I have asked Taylor and Lee to have a conversation with the local municipality, and in hopes that they can apply some pressure locally to the two outstanding landowners as well. So we want to work very closely with Bonnershire Valley to make sure that they are up to date and aware of the current state. You know, I know, you know, Taylor strongly believes that we can proceed next spring, but I want to make sure that we address the concerns with the two landowners, and that we find a way to manage it, otherwise we're going to be right back where we were. So I, that's my concern, that, you know, one of those gut feelings you get that bothers you about this, so we want to make sure that we're dealing with it. So that's our next move, is a quick visit with the CAO and the Mayor of Bonnershire Valley, just to outline the concerns and where we are in the process. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I think that's an extremely good suggestion, and you're planning to move forward with that, Mr. Morrow?
Yes, sir, hopefully that'll be done in the next week or so.
Thanks so much. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, call for the vote, all in favor of the recommendation? Carrie, thank you. Anything else on this?
I think that concludes the report.
Okay, so mover and secander to adjourn?
We need a mover and a secander to approve the report as a whole.
I'm gonna move that Councillor Bennett take over the chair, because I'm not here today. So I need a mover and secander for the report as a whole. Councillor TJ, Councillor Lynch, all in favor? Carrie, thank you, mover and secander to adjourn, I hope? Councillor TJ, Councillor Keller, all in favor? Carrie, thank you, we're adjourned.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the last County Council meeting of 2021, Wednesday, November the 24th, calling the meeting to order. As we gather this morning, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of our council and our committee that we are meeting on the traditional territory of the Algonquin people. We would like to thank the Algonquin people and express our respect and support for their rich history, and we are extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. We also thank all the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. I would now ask everyone to stand for a moment of silent reflection.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of this command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, a true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Lord, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you very much, please be seated. Mr. Morrow, could you do a roll call, please?
Thank you, Warden. Councillor Bennett.
I am here.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Rose.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Doncaster.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Donahue.
Here.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Emo.
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Grills.
Present.
Thank you, ma'am. Councillor Hunt.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Keller.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Love.
Present.
Thank you, ma'am. Councillor Lynch.
Here.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Pickett.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Rigge.
Present.
Thank you, ma'am. Councillor Ryanwald.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Murphy.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Councillor Sweet.
Present.
Councillor TJ.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. And Warden Robinson.
I'm here, too.
Thank you, ma'am.
It's gonna be one of those days, folks. Thank you, Mr. Morrow. Disclosure of community interest and the general nature thereof. Seeing none, I need a mover and a secander to adopt minutes of the County Council's meeting held on October the 27th, 2021. Moved by Councillor Murphy, seconded by Councillor Sweet, all in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Members of County Council, during the month of November, I attended 32 meetings on county business. On November 4th, I attended the embargoed virtual technical briefing hosted by the Deputy Minister of Finance, discovered there's no real advantage to getting the news early. On November the 7th, I, along with Councillor Peter Emo, had the arduous task of judging the best butter tarts in the county of Ranford. There were 31 competitors, and I have to tell you, after eating butter tarts for an hour, the sugar rush is something unbelievable. On November the 10th, I participated with CAO Paul Morrow in a meeting of the United Way Ontario East to discuss the presentation to County Council today. We will hear about the shift in focus, and how we may be able to collaborate on various initiatives going forward. As members of council in attendance know, the Ontario Winter Games 100-day kickoff on November the 16th was a great success. Minister Lisa MacLeod was in attendance, she indicated it's the first time that she has ever been at attendance at the 100-day kickoff of a municipality hosting the games. Certainly, her announcement that we will receive an additional $400,000 certainly set the tone for the whole evening. On November the 22nd, Mr. Morrow and I were panelists on the seniors housing forum, part of Advantage Ontario's 2021 conference. We were joined by Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing Parliamentary Assistant Jim McDonnell, Lisa Levin, CEO for Advantage Ontario, and Susan Graham Nutter, CEO of Reiki Centres. On November 25th and 26th, I will be attending the AMO Committee of the Whole Meeting, County Caucus Meeting, and AMO Board of Directors Meeting. Some of the topics of discussion are the 2022 proposed strategic objectives, which, again, I have had some concerns about, but, and will bring those concerns again forward on Friday, Indigenous municipal relationship agreements, and municipal engagement with Ontario Health Teams. On November 26th in the afternoon, I will be chairing the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus along with MPP John Yakubuski. This is an annual event where Eastern Ontario MPPs are invited to meet with the caucus to discuss priorities for the coming year. We're looking very much forward to that, and I want to thank John for being willing to co-chair that with me. Our meetings with local municipalities for 2021 have concluded, and due to some scheduling conflicts, we were not able to get to everyone, I believe, the four municipalities that we will try to book in 2022. It's been my pleasure to be a part of this delegation with CAO Paul Morrow, Director of Development and Property Craig Kelly, and our Director of Corporate Services Jeff Boss. I know when I speak for all of us, when I say that we've really enjoyed meeting your councils, and if time allows and there is interest, we might just do it all again next year, perhaps other members of the SLT will want to join us. I want to publicly congratulate Paramedic Chief Michael Nolan on receiving the prestigious Premier's Award. This award recognizes the outstanding contributions made by an Ontario college graduate who was working to make important social and economic contributions to Ontario and abroad, and I know that we all know there's no more deserving recipient than Chief Mike Nolan. On behalf of myself and members of County Council, I want to express our sincere condolences to the family of former councillor Irene Atoa, who passed away last week. Mrs. Aoda Atoya, I'm sorry, I'm not pretending for pronouncing it correctly, served as Reeve of the Township of Algonquin, Algonquin North from 1819, oh my goodness, let me try this all again. She served as Reeve of the Township of Algonquin North from 1889 to 1998, and is Reeve of the amalgamated Township of North Algonquin Whiblehors from 1998 to 2000, and was a member of County Council during that time. I am honored to have your confidence to be your warden for 2022. It is my intent to put my name forward for the position of Chair of the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus once again. The election for that position will occur on January 6th, 2022. I also want to talk to you about Ranford County VTAC. Certainly, in the news recently, we saw that the provincial government is considering allowing pharmacies to now do COVID testing for people who are symptomatic. We all know that assessment centers are funded basically for that reason, so VTAC, while we know there's funding until March 31st, there is a concern, I have a concern that as this evolves and the testing becomes something that you can get at a pharmacy, that the funding for assessment centers will be diminished and perhaps canceled altogether. I had a brief conversation yesterday with, with John Yakubuski about it, as well as CAO Morrow, and I will have a further conversation this afternoon with Chief Nolan, but my intention is to push forward with this now. I'm quite concerned, I know that Minister Ellie indicated to us in August that funding would continue, but we have nothing in writing, and while I certainly believe her intentions are good and true, I think we need to have something to fall back on, that we know absolutely there's no risk of Ranford County VTAC being lost to, to us, to the county of Ranford, in fact, to the province of Ontario. I will remind those assembled here of the following. County of Ranford, experience our history, share our future. This concludes my address for this session of County Council. So our first delegation is the presentation of Wardens Community Service Awards. The Wardens Awards were created to recognize individuals, businesses, and organizations that continue to make valuable contributions to our community. These contributions are not limited to providing employment and creating wealth. Individuals, businesses, and organizations also make important decisions and take real action regarding social responsibility. The Wardens Community Service Awards are designed to recognize and promote the social responsibility demonstrated by individuals, and both for-profit and not-for-profit organizations that are making a difference in our community. The Selection Review Committee considered all nominees on the basis of the criteria that showed how they contributed to the county of Ranford's quality of life, and to making the county of Ranford a better place in which to live and work. The awards, fortunately, will be presented again this year virtually, and with that, I would like to turn it over to the Director of Development and Property, Mr. Kelly, please, sir.
Thank you, Warden, and good morning to County Councilants who are award recipients, who will, will be online or are online at this moment. The Wardens Award that recognizes a nonprofit business today goes to Opiongo Hills Nordic Ski Club, from the snowy white caps of the hills of the township of Brunel, Lindock, and Rankin. Councillor Keller is on the down. This ski club was established in 2011 by a group of dedicated volunteers, intent on providing a network of superior Nordic or cross-country skiing experiences in Ranford County. Since that time, hundreds of skiers have enjoyed the network, and there have been thousands of hours dedicated to the ongoing maintenance, promotion, and operation of the over 19-kilometer trail system. The ski club trails are open only in the winter, December to March, and are meant for cross-country skiing and snowshoeing only. The effectiveness of the club over the years has been enhanced by the members to attract and retain volunteers. These active volunteers, represented here today by Beth Kennedy, keep the system going and providing economic development to the surrounding communities. The committee is looking forward to another great season, hopefully it's going to snow soon, of active living, and welcomes everyone to wop it this winter. The club today was nominated, for this year's award, was nominated by Mr. Chris Hinsberger, of course, of Bonnershire Caves, and past president of OBT-A. Congratulations to Opiongo Hills Nordic Ski Club. Beth, I just want to, do you want to introduce yourself, Beth?
Thanks, Greg, yeah, I'm Beth Kennedy, and this is my husband, Paul Jorgensen, sitting next to me. And, yeah, we started the ski club about 10 years ago, and it's been a lot of work, and it's been very rewarding, and people seem to just love it. Want to also thank Chris for nominating us, and Chris is definitely one of our hardworking volunteers.
And I'd like to add that Opiongo Hills Nordic Ski Club exists from the benefit of the landowners, or they have volunteered their land to allow us to ski there. So there's five different landowners that came on one at a time and said, yes, go ahead, use our land for skiing. So it really is a great community effort with the landowners and all the volunteers that, that keep the club running year after year.
Fantastic, I'm sure the Warden have comments once we get through the other award, and we'll come back to that one, so stay tuned. The Review Committee has awarded the Wardens Award this year for individual contributions to our community, to Karthi Rajamani. Karthi came to Canada as an immigrant from India in 1988, 1998, I'm sorry, and since then has become an invaluable part of our community in Ranford County, and to her adopted town of Deep River. Since beginning work at the Pembroke Public Library in 2004, she has dedicated herself to providing educational, informational, and recreational program for children, as well as taking an active role in promoting diversity, multiculturalism, and literacy in our region. Positive change has come in our community thanks to Karthi's contributions and her continued efforts and passion now in her role as CEO at the library, of which the Township of Laurentian Valley is an active partner. Karthi has developed a multicultural festival which allowed all different people and cultures to come together and celebrate and share their unique cultures with their neighbors in a way that had not been able to previously. This event has continued to grow year after year with Karthi and her team's hard work and love poured into this event each and every year. Karthi sits in the Local Immigration Partnership Program Advisory Committee and the Pembroke Diversity Advisory Committee to lend her knowledge to others and see how it may positively benefit others. She is a true leader and a champion of this region and this community, and her passion continues to strengthen diversity, multiculturalism, and literacy for, for the area in Pembroke and all of Ranford County. Karthi was nominated by Pembroke Mayor Mike Lemay. Congratulations to Karthi Rajamani. Karthi.
Thank you very much, and I'm Karthi Rajamani, CEO of Pembroke Public Library. First, I'd like to thank my board giving me full freedom to do what, what is passion for me, and I truly believe literacy and multiculturalism is important for the economic growth of any region, and as an immigrant, I know the struggles the newcomers go through, and, and also coming to the new place is not an easy, easy task, and making a community that's what I felt. For that, what can we do? While thinking about that, then we thought of bringing in Multicultural Festival. This gives exposure and knowledge to the existing community members so that they don't feel threatened by the newcomers. And also, every culture has unique, unique things to offer to the community by including everybody, making an inclusive community, and this is going to prosper the, bring prosperity in the community for the economic development and all those things. And I truly appreciate my mayor nominating me for this, thank you very much for selecting me, and I will continue doing my passion and make this community and Ranford County a wonderful place for newcomers and existing members to be in this community. Thank you.
Warden, I'll pass it back to you, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. I'm gonna start with Beth and Paul, congratulations to both of you, very, very pleased and very well-deserving award. And again, normally you would be in our beautiful council chambers where we would all stand up and applaud you, and I would present you with your award, and then we'd have a photo with, with the Mayor of Brunel, Lindock, Rigan. That's not going to happen today, however, Councillor Keller will be asked to present the award directly to you, and we will do that, so again, congratulations on being recipient in 2021. And, and to Karthi. I've had the opportunity over the years to actually be in the library at times with my, my grandchildren during some storytime, and I've, I've watched you in action, and you are absolutely a gift to the Pembroke Public Library, for sure, and all of the people that use the library. And I know there's a wine and cheese happening on Thursday evening, and I will certainly be there, a little late, but I will get there, and hopefully have a chance to have a little chat with you. Karthi is a resident of the town of Deep River, so again, it'll be the pleasure of Councillor Glenn Doncaster, who will be able to present you with your award in the weeks to come. So again, to, to Karthi and to Beth and Paul, congratulations, it's a great way to end 2021, and all the best for, for you in 2022, and I do hope it snows soon.
Thank you, Warden.
Thank you, Warden.
Councillor Keller.
No, just congratulations to both award winners, I definitely will take you up to that offer, Madam Warden, and happily present that award to the Opiongo Nordic Ski Club. We were fortunate in the past, I know when the organization first started, we were able to use our own municipal bulldozer to help them, you know, to start their trails and fix some of those up, and we look forward to continuing that partnership with the club.
Thanks, Sheldon.
Thank you very much. Now, just because you're award winners, you do not have to stay for the entire six-hour County Council meeting, but feel free to if you'd like. And I'm sure you think I'm kidding about the six hours, but I'm not. Anyway, thank you very much for joining us this morning. Thank you. Our second delegation is from the United Way Ontario East, and I've had a pleasure of meeting with these folks twice in the last couple of months. So I'm pleased to welcome Michael Allen, Jamie Bramburger, Jade Newman, and Priti Prabhu to do a presentation to us this morning, looking forward to it, a few glimpses I've gotten so far in a couple of meetings, I think you, County Council is gonna really enjoy this presentation, so I will turn it over to Jamie or Allen, I suppose, will start us off.
I'll start us off, Warden, thank you for the invitation, so, wearing a different hat today, I know many of you through my work at Algonquin College, and let me start this, this presentation with a couple of congratulations for the county. First of all, I attended your Ontario Winter Games 100-day kickoff last week, that was fantastic, and really, really looking forward to the game, so well done for the county. Warden Robinson, congratulations on your renewed mandate for another year in the Warden's Chair, which I think is wonderful as well. Now, Michael Nolan, I know, is in the audience, and winning a Premier's Award in the Ontario College System is not easy, a lot of competition, 24 colleges, so everyone should be really proud of everything that Michael has, has accomplished as a chief paramedic and as a college graduate, so we're very proud at Algonquin College, and I was really pleased to see the award winners for the Wardens Awards, and Karthi certainly has done some terrific work with the Local Immigration Partnership here in Ranford County, and really has been a strong voice for newcomer And really has been a strong voice for newcomer attraction. So having said all of that, let's move into the presentation with the United Way East Ontario. And I'll be delighted to introduce Michael Allen in just a moment, who is our CEO and president. I am a volunteer with United Way. I got involved about three years ago as part of an advisory council. And then from that became the Chair of the Renford County Advisory Council a little over a year ago. One of the things that we want to stress in the presentation today is the transformation that United Way East Ontario has been evolving through over the last bit. Some of you will remember something that was, you know, you would often see in a community, a thermometer with United Way. And it was really about a fundraising goal that was established each year to be able to reinvest funds into social agencies that supported the most vulnerable people in our community. You won't see those thermometers anymore, even though fundraising continues to be important to United Way East Ontario. It has evolved to be an impact organization. Now, what we mean by impact is it builds a strength around collaboration and convening and working with community partners to address needs and have the greatest impact in a community. So let me give you a couple of examples of the arena that United Way is working in right now that I think is relevant to the county of Renfrew. So if you think about our aging population in the county and the pressure that is putting on our healthcare agencies as well as supporting vulnerable seniors, United Way is doing a lot of work in that area and we'll talk more about that. The labor market gaps and having equitable opportunities for everyone who wants a job. United Way is doing a lot of work in that area as well. Newcomer attraction and welcoming communities, building on the work being done by organizations like local immigration partnerships. United Way is doing a lot of great work in that area as well. Really taking a strong lens at the impact that the pandemic has had on the most vulnerable populations because we know it has not been equitable. Those marginalized populations have been hit much more than others in the local economy. And of course, we're all talking about economic recovery from the pandemic and in a post-pandemic world. And hopefully that will come sooner than later. I think we've all experienced enough from this worldwide pandemic. But United Way has done a terrific job of bringing people together. And we'll speak more about that this morning as well. So my reason for being part of United Way is because I believe in the work they are doing. I think they have the infrastructure and the resources to support all of eastern Ontario, including Renford County. And there was an amalgamation a few years ago to bring Prescott Russell, Lanark, Renford County in with the Ottawa United Way infrastructure. And I think that has been highly beneficial. It has led to significant investment. We'll give you some examples of that today in our local area where it is making a huge difference for our citizens. And we hope after you hear the presentation today, you'll have a better sense of what that impact has been. So now I'm very pleased to introduce to you the Chief Executive Officer and President of United Way East Ontario. And I will also congratulate him while we're speaking about awards recently named to the Order of Ottawa, a very prestigious award. So Michael Allen, I'll hand it over to you now to share some more information.
Jamie, thank you very much for that kind introduction and as well putting our foot in the door for this presentation to the council. My congratulations as well, Warden Robinson, on your new mandate. We look forward to working with you and thank you for the couple of meetings that we have had. I will share a little story about our meeting, which perhaps describes why it is we're here today. One of the challenges that United Way has had, and I think Jamie sort of alluded to it when he said that it's to speak, our purpose today is to speak to the broadened profile of United Way's work in our communities. But it's very, very hard to live down a reputation that has been earned over many, many years. And even though our conversations were very solid and informed and we'll expand on them today with Warden Robinson and your Chief Administrative Officer, Mr. Mortal, thank you. They warned us is that today would not be a good day to ask for money. And we agree, we actually had no intention of asking for money. In fact, we're not even sure what we would ask for money to do. We want to acknowledge that the municipality does run a campaign, so we want to thank you for that. But that's not what we're here about today. The slide that's in front of you represents what over the years, United Way has been focused on across our region. We organize these things into what is referenced across the United Way movement in Canada as our three focus areas that more kids are on track to succeed, that people must be able to achieve financial independence and stability, that our communities must be great for everyone by improving equity, connections and wellbeing. We roughly organize that into three buckets, if you will. All the kids can be, poverty to possibility and healthy people in strong communities. I want to use the analogy for you today of a menu. Look at this. I'm not going to go through it in any detail because we've left some materials behind for you. But consider a menu for the municipality and indeed we use it the same thing for donors and other stakeholders to say, this is the area that we believe, driven by our research of what will improve the health of a community the most, if we can address where we are well-positioned to do so, we believe we can have positive outcomes. As Jamie mentioned, it speaks to dealing with the challenges faced by seniors who are isolated and dealing with the issues and the factors that lead to that isolation. It deals with mental health and addictions. It deals with youth. It deals with newcomers. It deals with people in crisis, et cetera. So consider these points, if you will, the broad headlines of the focus areas and activities that we are focused in. That was fine until, of course, the world changed for all of us when the pandemic hit. And so if I can just ask Priti, if you can just change the slide. What happened to us in the pandemic, of course, is that many of the issues that we were working on didn't change. In fact, if anything, they were exacerbated for isolated seniors. They were exacerbated for young people who were falling through the system in schools and dealing with mental health issues, dealing with their learning loss. And so over the course of the last two years, as Jamie mentioned, we struck, led by United Way East Ontario, across the region, what we referred to as a community response table. That table convened social service providers, municipalities, other government leaders, other institutions like public health, funders, donors, federal government, provincial government and municipalities to address the list of issues that you see before you. We addressed each of those with trying to understand the dynamics of those issues more deeply in the context of the pandemic. And then we tried to develop approaches where we could respond to that challenge. And so carrying on with my analogy of a menu, this is the menu that was put before us in terms of the things that we needed to try and address as a sector, as communities, for those who are most vulnerable. But like most of you, these issues, while familiar, are not the same feeling that you get when I suspect the things that has motivated you to public service is put in front of you. And so the one slide that Sean was trying to ensure was working is just something that lifted our spirits in the context of this work, in the context of advocacy, in the context of raising money, investing money and delivering these services, supporting organizations that were working together to make sure they were effectively doing so right across the region. This was but one example of an organization that we supported. And we were so lifted by this that we wanted to share it with you today because this is a taste of one of the meals that we have on our menu.
We just lost audio for a second, Sean. I wasn't clear what was going on, so I'll let you resume. My apologies.
Good afternoon. This message is for Jean and just you folks in general. I have to say I'm overwhelmed with the delivery of food. Today on Wednesday afternoon, a fellow dropped it off here and we chatted for a moment. He was very nice. You folks are all so nice. I am so pleased. I looked at some of the foods and there's some wonderful ones, spaghetti, lasagna, beef stroganoff and soups, minestrone. And tonight I found you have left me a favorite, a steak and mushroom pie. Oh, my gosh. I will have that one. I will cook that one up for this evening's meal, for dinner, for supper. Yeah. Oh, you folks, I can't thank everything you've done. I can't thank you enough. Thank you ever so much. I'm so grateful. I hope you're all well and you're doing an amazing service for this community. We all appreciate everything that you're doing and have done in the past. Okay, I better shut up. Okay, bye for now. Love you all. Bye for now.
So we'll just hold on this slide for a moment before we go to the next one. But thank you, Sean, for making sure that that worked because it's oftentimes not, the technology does elude us, so thank you for that. You'll forgive me, of course, for the analogy that I'm drawing about a menu because that message, of course, touched us. But it does speak to what you'll hear, of course, in John, that's not his real name, but what you'll hear in John's voice is the response that was demanded of us, called upon our communities, called upon our organizations in the early days of the pandemic. In the early days of the pandemic, the seniors, as you know, were identified as the most vulnerable. And they were isolated, particularly in the rural area. They did not have access to food. They did not have access to their medicines. And an infrastructure that was there had to be reinforced and invested in and supported urgently, nimbly, to ensure that we didn't lose people because they were forgotten by many. And of course, yes, we had great support from levels of government that came on later. But one of the things that United Way represented in the context of the early days of the pandemic was an ability to rapidly respond nimbly and lean on the infrastructure that is the social services sector across this region to provide that kind of support, not just there, but in many, many other areas. So one of the reasons why I was very pleased that Warden Robinson gave us this opportunity because we have been going through this process and working with many in Renfrew County and across our region. But we do have a sense, although the demarcation line is blurry, that we are transitioning from a pandemic crisis phase to a post-pandemic recovery phase. And in the context of that recovery, we have learned a lot. We have learned a lot about our communities. We've learned a lot about the inequities that the pandemic wreaked upon certain populations. We have learned a lot about how we need to respond, both nimbly but also in chronic circumstances. And so we have developed over time, and there's some documentation that goes much more deeply, a series of post-pandemic priorities. Again, a menu that is refined from what we did before. And so I'll ask that the animation just be added now, please. And so what we know, of course, is that for many, particularly those young people who fell between the cracks because of economic reasons, because of a lack of access to technology, which is a particular issue in the rural parts of our region, our catchment area, that many of them have lost some of their academic achievement. We heard John and many, many others will continue to struggle with basic needs, their access to medication, their access to mental health counseling, their access to food and shelter. That we believe that there's an opportunity as we build back better to do so in a more shared way. I'll speak about that again in a moment. And we recognize that mental health and health crisis supports are going to be key to ensuring that we get back to our pre-pandemic stages, but actually we hope better. And part of the challenge, of course, is that we deal a lot, and many of you will have experienced this in your own communities, a community sector that, like many others, is tired, is exhausted, is drawn. And we believe that we need to continue to invest in that sector to make sure they have that capacity and they in fact are better capable to build and respond. One other slide, oh, and sorry, of course, thank you, there was one other we missed. And of course, a big issue both in urban and rural settings is seniors and caregivers. This is a particularly different challenge in our rural communities because of distance and isolation. But nevertheless, the challenges are no different in terms of the needs of those individuals. The other thing we've learned is, and again, I won't dwell on any of this, but it won't surprise you to know that the pandemic was particularly harsh for these equity-seeking groups, indigenous peoples, BIPOC populations, new Canadians, women, people with disabilities, LGBTQ, vulnerable seniors, people living in low-income rural communities, particularly remote and underserved. So again, a lot of our work has this lens embedded to it. You might wonder then, well, if you're not asking for money today, which we are not, and how do we do our work? And so Jamie, if I can ask that this next slide come up. We believe that we now have a quiver of tools, a quiver of arrows that we use to advance the work against our goals. Some of that will continue to be revenue development and resource development and fundraising. Some of it, and Jamie, I think, will touch on it, is investing in programs and initiatives. But increasingly, we are convening and collaborating, establishing partnerships, reaching out to stakeholders. And in principle, that's why we're before you today. We also bring, however, not unlike your municipality and the work that your warden spoke of in terms of the work that she do, we have an advocacy voice for our communities that we can share with you. We also have research and evaluation, much of which we will share with you as well. Let me turn to Jamie for a moment, just to give you some of the examples that he has experienced in his time with us. And we again offer them in the spirit of examples of how we might work together. And then we'll have an opportunity just to finish up and leave you our ask, which is basically to work together, but we have some specific thoughts about where we might start. So Jamie, back to you.
Thanks, Michael. And I'll share a few things that we've been working on from a United Way Advisory Council perspective, but certainly with our staff around the investments that are made in community initiatives. So let me first just go to my own work at Algonquin College because I'm thinking about it as I look at the speaker series banner behind me because we had one last night. One of the things we did during the pandemic, we've had a very successful speaker series at the college for many, many years, which was always held in person. But we knew that seniors were being isolated. And United Way had done such great work in research by sharing, you know, vulnerable populations and the impact isolation had on seniors, that we took that report and built a case for a federal grant through New Horizons to move to a virtual speaker series event. As a result of that, we've had some terrific guests. His Honor, Murray Sinclair, Peter Mansbridge last night, Bob McDonald from CBC's Quirks and Quirks. The grant allowed us to make it free to seniors to address, at least in part, that isolation issue by having an educational engagement opportunity. But the whole proposal that was funded through the federal government came from the research United Way had done. So that is a great example of how we can leverage some of this work that United Way is doing around grant applications that the county of Renfrew may be applying for. There are so many great resources that United Way has. Another good example would be some recent work that's being done by the Robbie Dean Counseling Centre that is being funded in part by United Way to look at gaps for indigenous residents in our community who need additional supports. There has been also some great work with other organizations within our region. And I'm just going to pull a few more up here, just a shopping list, if I could use Michael's term, menu, where there has been significant investments made in virtual mental health care with partners at the Phoenix Centre. Investments in seniors, as you know, the Including Seniors Centre without walls across Renford County. There's been investments in children and youth in rural communities, including the Community Resource Centre in Killaloo. I mentioned the Indigenous Partnership with Robbie Dean Centre. And the list goes on, as well as supporting partners like the Women's Sexual Assault Centre and Victim Services. What have I have learned since being part of United Way for the past few years and in particular in the last year and a half during this pandemic is that United Way has an incredible foundation and framework and credibility because of the great work it has done for so many decades. And it has an ability to bring partnerships together and to collaborate and to convene. So part of my role and part of the role of our advisory council is to advocate on behalf of what United Way can do to help communities. And as Michael said, the And as Michael said, the investments far outweigh anything that United Way asks of communities. There are significant financial investments and, you know, in-kind contributions that United Way is making to build stronger communities. So when we look at collaboration moving forward with the county of Renfrew, we think there are a number of ways that the county can be involved, and here's some examples. Getting involved in community wealth building. We held a session a few weeks ago with the Ontario Winter Games as a backdrop. This is going to be a significant economic thrust, as you all know, for the county of Renfrew. But we asked the question about how do we make it inclusive so that there are opportunities for youth, for people with disabilities, for people that might be in marginalized populations that might not be able to access or support from an economic perspective? We think that that is a real opportunity for the Ontario Winter Games and for the county of Renfrew to look at that from a more equitable lens around social procurement and things like this. We have an Employment Accessibility Resource Network Members Table. That is certainly an arena that the county of Renfrew could be involved in to support people, again, that may have trouble accessing the labor market because we know we have a significant labor market shortage. We all see the Help Wanted signs throughout Renfrew County, for that matter, across the province and across the country during this pandemic. What can we do and how can United Way help? We have a very, a great group of people that are part of our Renfrew County Advisory Council, individuals who come from across the region, representing a number of sectors. For example, Crystal Martin-Lapinski is an Indigenous representative for us. We have Doug Steves, who represents Labor. Megan Conway, who is the new CEO and President of Volunteer Canada, a national organization. Kelly Lemenchuk from Renfrew County Community Futures. These are really great people who are now helping United Way get the message out and helping us make connections. Michael referenced the Community Roundtable and the community impact of these meetings in in planning and addressing particular issues that were focused on the pandemic and the impact it was having on communities. That is an opportunity, again, for the county to have representation. And the United for All movement is really about addressing systemic racism issues, for example, that are hindering the ability of communities to progress. And so when we look at newcomer attraction and creating more diversity in Renfrew County, this is an opportunity for Renfrew County to also play a leadership role. So these are a few ideas we have that we think that the county could get involved in. And I'll turn it back to Michael if I haven't presented that in in the best possible lens. But but I think that's really what the, one of the suggestions or recommendations.
Jamie, you were excellent, and of course, translating this into the hyper-local experience that each of you represent is where we're looking for help. And so, you know, Jamie outlined earlier and referenced, and we just, we talked about it. Of of the last period of time between January 2020 and moving now into June 2022, United Way East Ontario has assisted for the benefit of of residents and vulnerable populations within Renfrew County, $2.7 million. So but we don't, we're not here to talk about either asking for money or talking about investing money. We want to talk about our potential partnership because we believe profoundly that the relationships that we have across this region will make us more effective together where our interests align. And so that was the, that was the ask that we we had of your warden. She provided us this opportunity. We hope you have received it in the very same spirit. I think this is a starting off, a jumping off point for us to have further conversations. I know that Mr. Moro is very keen to hear the reaction of the council, hopefully have a mandate then to proceed. And then for us, it's about rolling up our sleeve with our staff and your staff and working with all of you to move the agenda forward on addressing the issues that confront us all. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael and Jamie. That last slide says it all for me. What I would ask before I open it up for comments and questions from council, bullet number three was the Renfrew County Advisory Council. I would wonder if you could send me the terms of reference for that, council? Because it just so happens that next month we will be looking at membership on ad hoc committees, and that may be something that may be of interest to some of our members. So if you could provide that with me, to me as soon as possible, that would be wonderful. With that, I'll open it up to council for comments or questions. Counselor Emo, please.
Thank you very much, Warden, and through you to to our guests. Very informative presentation, and and I think I think it's quite useful for us to recognize and to hear about the extent of your of your research and I guess best term in the community. And investment, as we all know, is not simply just pouring dollars into a problem. It 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 means consultation and developing a strategy and a plan and then seeking resources and partnerships. So thank you for the the overview and your five five points about how there could be engagement with the county of Renfrew and with the greater community are well taken. And I'm certainly going to pay attention to it. And I know that my, the other 16 friends that we have in the in the chambers will as well. I'm glad to hear that the warden asked about your advisory, your advisory council. I think that's a very good jumping off point for for us as an organization. So thank you very much for today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Emo. Any other further questions or comments for our delegation? Seeing none, again, Jamie, Michael, Jade, thank you very much for being here. The two silent over here were certainly chatting and providing us information. And it was very, very informative. I thank you again for for coming fairly short notice that these folks were given by me to come. But it was excellent presentation. I'm assuming that we will copy of the slide deck that we can share with members of council. And again, thank you very much, and I suspect that you will be hearing from me or our staff in the in the weeks to come. So again, thank you very much and congratulations, Michael, on your Order of Ottawa Award. Very, very well deserved.
Take care. Thank you, Warden. Take care.
Stay safe.
Thank you very much, Warden.
You're very welcome. Our second delegation is WSP, who are going to give us an overview of the planning study on cannabis. And I'm going to turn the introductions over to Dr. Kelly, please, sir.
Good morning, Warden. Good morning. We have with us. You recall several months ago, receiving draft document on cannabis. Obviously, to use as they update their zoning bylaws. Cannabis, of course, has been a, it's cannabis, a topic with discussion at many municipalities with some bringing in interim control bylaws while they determine a study on how they manage production facilities as they move forward. So an RFP was issued. WSP was the lucky winners of that RFP, if you will, great. And has done a great job putting that together. We have consulted with your municipalities over the last few weeks and have presented something very similar. But this information is coming to you today for acceptance, hopefully as information, and will flow back to your municipalities for adding and amending zoning bylaws as we get through that project over the next little while. So again, just a little note that the study was paid for out of the Cannabis Reserve Fund and will be of use for all municipalities. So with that, Warden, I will ask Greg to, I think Sean has a presentation to share and will help guide Greg and Angela through the flipping of the pages. Thank you, Warden.
And thank you very much, Warden, members of council. Good morning. And indeed, Craig, we are very lucky to to have worked with with all of you to to prepare this this very important study on behalf of the county. Next slide, please. So as Craig mentioned, many of the municipalities within the county have passed an interim control bylaw, and that's to prohibit cannabis-related uses until such time that a study such as this is prepared to inform not only the county but also the local municipalities on how cannabis uses may be considered moving forward. The intent is to really, you know, investigate, you know, undertake a jurisdictional scan to see what other municipalities in the province are doing related to cannabis to really inform the study that we prepared in a meaningful way to ensure that sort of local options can be identified. And we'll talk a little bit about that through through the course of the presentation. Next slide, please. So as many of you are likely familiar with, the existing county OP does contain policies that regulate cannabis uses specifically related to cannabis production facilities. It also provides some guidance related to various tools that could be implemented some of the local municipalities related to site plan control, setbacks or separation distances, and also identifies how and where certain cannabis production facilities may be located, whether they be in a rural agriculture designation, urban community or village community. But the official plan does not specify specifics site plan control requirements or it doesn't necessarily differentiate between the types of uses, whether they be agricultural or industrial. Next slide, please. That's fine. Thanks. Now, in terms of the review of the local zoning bylaws, there are obviously a number of them. There's 20 separate zoning bylaws in effect. And most of them, and this is quite typical across the province, most of them are a bit old. And what that means is that they do actually predate the legalization of cannabis and cannabis-related uses, so certainly well before 2018. And existing provisions within those bylaws do not necessarily provide any clarity or address land use conflicts that can arise from cannabis-related uses, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. And we're of the opinion that additional provisions are needed to ensure clarity and to mitigate land use conflicts, as the case may be, depending on the municipality. Next slide, please. So Angela's going to walk you through a bit of the best practices review, the jurisdictional scan. Because as I mentioned, as part of many assignments that we prepare, it is important to understand sort of the tri-tested and true examples, what's out there, and to really determine what needs to be applied locally within the county.
Thanks, Greg. Good morning, members of council. So as previously mentioned, it's important to understand different jurisdictions and how they have dealt with cannabis-related issues. So in terms of our best practice review, we looked at other counties as well as lower-tier municipalities of similar size. So in that, we discovered typically cannabis production and those associated terms such as air treatment controls are defined. And there should be considerations for cannabis cultivation, both as an agriculture and as an industrial use. And there are certainly also setbacks and other zoning requirements. And aside from that, there are also provisions for odor control, air treatment, fencing, screening, parking, outdoor storage, and those other other provisions that associate with mitigating cannabis-related uses. Next slide, please. So in terms of our local municipal sessions, so as Craig has mentioned, we consulted with the local municipalities through this process. And generally, what we've heard is that municipalities would prefer to have a more generalized official plan policies so that local municipalities can implement different options, given that there's different needs and responsibilities. So this way, a more generalized OP approach will allow them more flexibility. And it is acknowledged that there is a lack of clarity in the existing zoning bylaws since there are issues with interpretation that could result in cannabis protection and cultivation that are permitted where there are land use conflicts. And it's also acknowledged that a system policy approach would be helpful for the municipalities. And it will be, it will assist the growers who would like to operate the county since there will be similar approaches across the county. Next slide, please. So in terms of our recommendations, so it's important to note that all these recommendations have detailed sample text that's provided within the report. So for the purpose of this presentation, I'll just be providing a brief overview as to the direction of that policy. So in terms of the official plan, our recommendation is that cannabis production and cultivation should be defined and considered as an agriculture use. And that includes both processing as well as indoor and outdoor cultivation. Cannabis production and processing that's independent from cultivation operation should be defined and considered as an industrial use. So there should also be complete application requirements for zoning bylaw amendment and site plan control where it's needed applicable and to require those details for those previous mitigating features such as lighting, fencing, security, outdoor control ventilation in order to address any impacts that cannabis operation may have on the community. In addition, we're recommending for cannabis production and cultivation facility to purpose-built facilities only where it is proposed as agriculture use. So essentially, the intent is to prevent retrofit and use of existing agricultural buildings in order to address land use impacts, since a lot of those buildings were, when they were constructed, were not quite a bit older, and they were not intended for this kind of, this kind of use. So next slide, please. In terms of our recommendation for zoning, so certainly cannabis-related terms should be defined. We're recommending a single definition to cover different scales of facilities. So this way, it will achieve a simplicity and functionality. So those, so there will also be additional provisions in place to address performance standards based on the scale. So in that case, we'll have to define associated cannabis terms such as security fencing, air filtration systems, so that we can implement those additional performance standards. Next slide, please. So in terms of permitting cannabis-related activities as an agriculture use. So as previously mentioned, cannabis cultivation should be defined and recognized as agriculture use. The processing of cannabis should be permitted as a right, as an agriculture-related use, provided that with cultivation. So indoor cultivation and production, again, as previously mentioned, should only be permitted in facilities, and any retrofit will be prohibited. Next slide, please. In terms of permitting cannabis-related activities as industrial use. So cannabis protection and cultivation generally contains several activities in a single location, and those activities are usually well suited in the industrial zones. So it's an ideal zone for this type of processing. So it's recommended that cannabis production and cultivation be permitted in the industrial zone. Oh, thanks. So as previously mentioned, there will have to be performance standards. So in terms of performance standard, we provided recommendations for setbacks, loud area separation distance, and limiting activities for permitted cannabis production. The production and processing aspect will be limited, given that it's agriculture use and cultivation should be the predominant use. Next slide, please. So as, again, as previously mentioned, there will have to be associated performance and other considerations in the zoning bylaw. So there could, there are considerations for outdoor storage. So there's different options that's been provided to the municipalities based on their desires. So for outdoor storage, it could be prohibited, or it can be permitted to be subject to setback and screening. For loading space, similar as well, it could be, oh, sorry. Oh, it could be enclosed fully in a building or be permitted externally, again, subject to setbacks and screening. There's also parking provisions associated with the facility as well. So in that case, it could be, the similar existing provisions could be applied. So for example, if the municipality already had parking standards for commercialized greenhouse, for example, that could be applied, or a brand-new parking standard could be implemented. And we'll provide examples for that in the report. Next slide, please. So in terms of our recommendations for site plan control, so it's very typical for site plan control bylaws to exclude rural and agriculture development as a way to encourage agriculture, agriculture development within the municipality. So we certainly recommend that local site plan control bylaws to exclude cannabis cultivation and production from any exceptions that may be in the existing site plan control bylaw. So in terms of different site plan considerations, we provided sort of a cheat sheet, a chart outlining what those concerns could be and what the method to address them should be and what should be required from the from the abundant. So for those considerations, we look at odor, light, agriculture impact, traffic, noise, security measures, water supply, storage, unit design, and waste management. Next slide, please. We've also provided recommendations for nuisance bylaw, and this is certainly the best way to deal with any any personal use related to, related to cannabis. So nuisance bylaw can be implemented in different ways, and that will depend on the on the context of the municipalities and what their desires are. So they're implemented as well. It can be implemented through existing bylaws. So if you, if the municipalities have existing noise bylaw, odor bylaw, that could be amended to include cannabisers, or they can simply implement a brand-new bylaw. So as far as they could implement a cannabis nuisance bylaw to deal specifically with cannabis. And the example that has also been included in the report. So I'd like to turn to Greg for some closing remarks. Thanks. So I'd like to turn it over to Greg for some closing remarks. Thanks.
Thanks, Angela. And just, just I wanted to provide up just an overarching sort of narrative to summarize the process. So. We've, we've had a number of conversations with with the local municipalities, both local council as well as local planners and staff. And we feel that, you know, that was a very meaningful exercise to ensure that we capture some of the local issues. At the outset of the presentation, you know, certainly we, we look at a jurisdictional scan to see what others would have to apply that, as I mentioned, in a meaningful way locally. And without that local feedback, it's very difficult to adapt that. So I do appreciate the feedback that we've received and I will say that. The the recommendations through this process have changed as a result of that feedback. So this directly responds to that feedback. And what we've heard is. The Royal, we, we need flexibility. We need flexibility to understand what's out there. We need flexibility to apply it locally within our municipality, because every municipality is different. And we have to, we have to strive to capture those issues as best, as best that captured. So. I just wanted to let you know that we do appreciate the the feedback we received and. I believe that that the, you know, the final report does does reflect that feedback in a meaningful way. So. Thank you very much for the opportunity, Warden and Council, and happy to to take any additional questions or maybe.
All right. Thank you very much, Greg. I'm just gonna turn it over to Director Kelly just.
And thank you for all your hard work. I'd like to also acknowledge Mr. Bruce Howard, who's with us here today as well. On all the work that he and his planning staff put into the recommendations and working with municipalities on this. So moving out of this from today, barring any, any major suggestions or changes. The the study will be emailed or sent out to your local municipalities, to your CAOs. And the conversation can start if so, if anybody so wishes to do so. With Mr. Howard and or your planning staff to incorporate some of the recommendations into your own zoning bylaws as we move forward. I think, I think we should acknowledge that cannabis production, the legal part of it is becoming a, a. An industry here in Redford County, glass house, pot tanks, of course, in whitewater region is growing and and and. Adding staff as we, as we go. The the recent announcement of a cannabis production facility coming into Foymount will add jobs and economic development to. To to Bonnershire Valley. So we're anxious to assist as we move forward in the planning and economic development department to ensure that cannabis and related. Facilities are developed in an appropriate fashion in the communities moving forward. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. So I'll open up. Is there any, are there any comments or questions? Counselor Lynch, please.
Thank you, Warden. Thank you, Greg and Angela. At your presentation last Thursday, you mentioned licensing fees. I'm curious if the county will give the. Take cost of the facility, rare footage, and then that'll pass down to the municipality? Or will it be individual municipalities deciding what the license fee be? Thank you.
Mr. Kelly, I'm looking towards you.
Yeah, I'll ask Mr. Bender as well to, to, I meant, really, it's not going, the county is, has no intention. Of licensing as a county endeavor. This would be an individual municipality's choice to license and enforce.
And through you, Warden, to to Counselor Lynch, each, because. In some of the discussions that we've had previously, each municipality is so very different depending on staffing complement as well as. Enforcement needs and perhaps even the the review timelines. So so that. You know, the the licensing framework would need to be developed based on each municipality. However, certain, you know, general guidance could certainly be provided.
Counselor Lynch, follow up?
Yes, thank you. The second part of the question was just to sum up, if I own a greenhouse outside, I'm not going to get a license. So I have to have a facility that. Is better industrial. Not a zone, but a cement building that will be better prepared to host the materials. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I just wanted to thank Greg and Angela. Recommendations, you're certainly making this far more flexible for us, and I think that you've incorporated. Some site plan. Items that we desperately need to ensure that the people of Foymount feel more comfortable. Going forward with this facility. So I just wanted to give a thank you and a shout out to all of you. You obviously pivoted very quickly for this presentation. Thanks.
No, nobody did. Thank you very much, Counselor Murphy. Any other comments or questions? Seeing then, again, thank you very much for your presentation and. I think it's, it's excellent information and I'm looking forward certainly for coming back to my municipality and we can have a more fulsome discussion on it. With that, I have a phone call I must take. So folks, we're going to take a. Good, we're gonna take fifteen minute break. We'll start back at ten thirty. Welcome back, everyone. Next on our agenda is the correspondence, Mr. Moro.
Thank you, Warden. Sorry for keeping you in suspense. All correspondence has been provided to the appropriate committee.
Oh, thank you. I know you were pretty sure I was going to miss it, so you weren't exactly expecting me to to ask for it. We will begin our committee reports. And the first one is Finance Administration Committee, Counselor Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Members of County Council, we, your Finance and Administration Committee wish to report and recommend as follows. Under information, number one is the inaugural meeting. We will be meeting in person on Tuesday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty one. And there are rules in place. Number two is a resolution from the Township of Whitewater Region. Number three is council remuneration. Number four is the treasurer's report as at September thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Number five is the COVID nineteen corporate financial summary to September thirtieth. Number six is the POA administration manager. We are welcoming Ms. Ashley Wilton. Renfrew County District Health Unit Funding Formula. And is a letter attached. Number nine is the Renfrew County Clerk Treasurers Association Finance Subcommittee Meeting. And there is quite a bit of background there for your perusal. Number ten is Municipal Finance Officers Association of Ontario, twenty twenty one Fall Economic Statement. Number eleven are Roma delegations. For Roma, we've asked for a delegation with Minister Elliott on Ontario Health Teams. For public health, Minister Clark for affordable and attainable housing, Minister Thompson for infrastructure. And Minister Phillips for supportive housing. Number twelve is a bylaw resolution number FAC C twenty one dash eleven dash one thirty one moved by the chair, second by committee. That the revised bylaw be adopted to appoint a chief administrative officer and and. To define the duties thereof, appointing Mr. Craig Kelly as acting chief administrative officer. For the period January first, twenty twenty two to December thirty first, twenty twenty two. And good luck to Craig. Number thirteen is the vaccination policy for council members, resolution FAC C twenty one dash eleven dash one thirty two. Moved by the chair, second by committee, that county council approve the revised corporate policy G zero nine. Vaccination policy and further that a bylaw to amend by law sixty three dash zero three. Being a bylaw to establish human resources, corporate policies and procedures for the county of Renfrew be adopted. And again, there's quite a bit of background there. Number fourteen is the Municipal Modernization Fund intake two, resolution number FAC C twenty one dash eleven dash one thirty three. Moved by the chair, second by committee, that county council adopt a bylaw to authorize the warden and clerk. To enter into a transfer payment agreement with Her Majesty the Queen in right of Ontario. As represented by the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing for the Municipal Modernization Fund intake two. Number fifteen, One Investment Resolution FAC C twenty one dash eleven dash one thirty seven. Moved by the chair, second by committee. That a bylaw be adopted to authorize the corporation of the county of Renfrew to enter into an agency agreement. Between Chums Financing Corporation and the local authority services. And eligible investors with respect to One Investment, and there is background. Number sixteen, Shared Cost Services Long Term Care Homes, resolution number FAC C twenty one dash eleven dash one thirty eight. Moved by the chair, second by committee, that a bylaw be adopted to authorizing the warden and clerk to enter into a memorandum of understanding. Between the corporation of the city of Pembroke and the corporation of the county of Renfrew for shared cost services, long term care homes. And I will note that this is fifty years old. So I want to thank everybody that was involved. For finally clearing this up and coming to a great resolution. And finally, number seventeen is the Benefit Renewal Services Resolution FAC C twenty one dash eleven dash one thirty nine. Moved by the chair, second by committee, that a bylaw be adopted to enter into a service agreement renewal. With Cowen Benefits Consulting for the period January first, twenty twenty two. To December thirty first, twenty twenty two. And further, the county council adopt a bylaw at the next session of county council. To enter into a service agreement renewal policy with Manu Life Financial for the provision of a benefits insurance. Program Policy forty seven oh four for the period of January first, twenty twenty two to December thirty first, twenty twenty two. And there's some sort of disheartening background there, but I believe that. Our Corporate Services Department led by Mr. Foss did the best that they could. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and Committee members, Burrows, Doncaster, Denny Hugh, Hunt, Peckett, Robinson and Sweet. Thank you, Madam Warren.
Thank you very much, Chair Murphy. So we'll go back under information. Item number one, the inaugural meeting of Redford County Council, which will be on December the fourteenth. It will be a hybrid meeting. So what I would ask by the end of this week, if you could let Rose know if you're planning to attend virtually or in person. That would be helpful. Any, any comments? Item number one. Counselor Murphy, please.
Second, Warden, is this subject to change?
That's change is what we've been doing for twenty months. So yes. If if things got worse and and the, you know, public health recommended that we not do it, absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted everybody, everybody to be on sort of high alert, like watch your emails just in case.
But we, I mean, there is some planning involved, so we're going to go with the assumption that some of us will be here and some of us will be virtual. Thank you. Any other comments? Item number two, township of Whitewater Region Council. Three, council remuneration. For the treasurer's report. Five, COVID nineteen corporate financial summary. Six, provincial offenses administration. Seven, the POA backlog. Eight, Redford County and District Health Unit Funding Formula. I actually reached out to the Chair of the Board of Health and we are meeting for lunch next Wednesday. So. I'm hopeful that we can have a frank and conversation and and move forward to better relationship between both of our organizations. Number nine, Renfrew County Clerk Treasurers Association. Ten, Municipal Finance Officers Association. Eleven, eleven Roma delegations. I don't know how, how council feels and I don't know how flexible the province is. But I would make a suggestion that. If we're not, we don't feel confident that we have fairly. Certain that we're going to be receiving funding for Redford County VTAC. Past the end of March, I would make the suggestion that. Instead of discussing with Minister Elliott, this point, public health, that we we change that to Redford County VTAC. I would like to hear comments from members of council. Counselor Murphy, please.
I think that's an excellent idea and possibly a better use of our time. Thank you.
Counselor Love, please.
Thank you, Warden. I definitely would support that change. I think we have to deal with the. The most urgent priorities that we have. And at the moment, it's not public health. It would be VTAC. Thank you.
Counselor Donahue, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I, I would seek some clarity on. In the triaging, if you will, of the the two proposed delegations with Minister Elliott. If public health perhaps might have been of substance more so than Ontario Health Teams, in fact.
Well, I was certainly, I'm open to that discussion. I know that certainly. From our position here at the county, as well as CEO WC and AMO, the. Wanting legislated guarantee that there's municipal elective representation on those governance boards. It is really one of the prior, definitely one of the priorities. And so. You know, that's basically one of the things we would have been talking about. So I'm again, open to, to discussion. Counselor Donahue.
Thank you. I certainly absolutely recognize the legitimacy and certainly will perhaps seek the counsel of counsel. But of course, it has come up repeatedly in this chamber, virtually or otherwise. Of the increasing cost of public health now being borne by municipal funding partners. And I have repeated consistently that, yes, it has increased by ten percent. But in fact, we've been whistling past to the graveyard because the province has been mitigating that that increase. That in fact, but for that mitigation, we would be seeing the cost of public health to the the municipal treasury. Probably something on more like the order of fifty percent. That certainly seems to me to be of substantial concern. In my estimation, certainly on on pace with the concerns with municipal representation on Ontario Health Teams.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments, Counselor Donahue. Can I suggest that someone make a motion to sever item number eleven on the report? Moved by Counselor Donahue, seconded by Counselor Love. All in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. We'll get back to that. Item number twelve, the CAO bylaw. Mr. Moro, please.
Thank you. Knowing that it has not passed yet, I just want to make the comment to thank Mr. Foss for his, his. Role as the acting C O over the last year. It has not been an easy role. In fact, I quite happy that Jeff. Played that role during COVID and at the same time with the office move. It was fantastic to have Jeff's support as the acting C O when we were making the move and undertaking the project. Again, Craig was able to manage the logistics of the, the construction project. But Jeff played a significant role as the acting C O, helping with logistics as well. And played a significant role in terms of coordinating. So thank you to Jeff for that role as acting C O.
Thank you, Mr. Moro. I think Mr. Foss is a little shy because we can't see him. But exceptional work as always from our areas, from our senior leadership team. Any other comments? Saying none, good luck, Mr. Kelly. Number thirteen, the vaccination policy. Counselor Ryan Moll, please.
Thank you, Chair. I just wonder if that can be severed from the report as well.
You're moving that to be severed or a second or place? Counselor Donahue, all in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Item number fourteen, Municipal Modernization Fund. Fifteen, One Investment. Sixteen, Shared Cost Services. Again, this is excellent to, to get this far. Counselor Ema, please.
Yeah, congra-
Yeah, congratulations to the city county liaison committee for completing this. I would suggest one small change, page one ninety-eight, item G. It says the County of Renfrew will have our external auditors. I would suggest changing that as ours because I don't think this is our document. It's a shared document. But other than that, that's pretty nitpicky, but it's one of the things I do well. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Counselor Emo. I always enjoy the nitpicking. Mr. Morrow, can we make that change? All right, thank you. Any other comments? Number seventeen, benefit renewal. The report, oh, Counselor Emo, please.
Very quickly. Am I correct in assuming this is just the segment that pertains to the County of Renfrew and not all of the partners? I think I'm correct because it mentions eight hundred and seventy-eight employees or something along those lines. And so I would assume that also includes County Council. Thank you.
Mr. Faust, please.
Thank you, Warden. Our renewal applies only to the County of Renfrew. We are one of the members of the Municipal Benefits Committee, so there's a number of participating municipalities. But our renewal is just for the County of Renfrew. Thank you.
Counselor Emo, please.
Thank you. And just another question. The, it mentions long-term disability and that we haven't had any claims. If I read that correctly, we hadn't any claims since two thousand and sixteen for a long-term disability. Thank you. If that is, that's remarkable.
Again, Mr. Faust, please.
Thank you, Warden. No, in fact, within our long-term disability program, there are a significant number of claims. I don't can't really reference the page number just right now, but we certainly are seeing increased activity within the long-term disability program, and that's reflected in the renewal pricing that we see in front of us today.
My apology, I misread the slide. It was slide twenty-nine. My apology.
Fine. Counselor Donahue, please.
Thank you, Madam Warren. Just seeking a little bit more clarity, this resolution is pertaining only to the renewal for the County of Renfrew. But it is my understanding, certainly acknowledging that amongst the participants in the MBC, that is the Municipal Benefits Committee, it is somewhat of an à la carte menu. Everyone that participates doesn't necessarily have the identical plan. I know for a fact that the township of Admaston Bromley has some more items than the county or some items that the county does not participate in, we participate in. But in, in that question that Counselor Emo asked first, it seems to me that in all likelihood that the treasurer of your municipality will likely be circulating with that emoji with the eyes wide open just as much as those looking in today are. I anticipate that you are, as we are in Admaston Bromley, likely to anticipate some pretty significant change to our own benefits package just the same. I will say I note that since the time of the Finance Administration Committee that we are less pleased with the, the increase on offer.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments on item number seventeen? If not, the report as a whole minus item number eleven and thirteen. Do I have a mover?
Madam Warren.
Thank you very much. All in favor of the report minus eleven and thirteen? Thank you. I'd like to take us back then to item number eleven. Again, what I'm asking is for consideration to change, if we need to, to change public health or OHTs, although I'm, my, my suggestion is that we change the public health delegation to River County VTAC. I'd like some more further discussion. Counselor Murphy, please.
But Warren, knowing that we've already submitted to the, to the government, the request for delegation, VTAC is sort of a public health thing. Could you sneak that in, you know, sort of do a half and half delegation when it comes to public health?
My preference is not to sneak it in. My preference is to start having conversations now. I am going to offer through, after my conversation with Chief Nolan and John, I'm going to offer to go and meet Minister Elliott wherever and whenever she would like to. So I'm not, you know, I'm not content to wait till Roma if we don't have to. But if we're not successful in being able to have a, a conversation before then, I think that I would really like to give the minister a heads up that we're coming and it's VTAC once again. And that, you know, time is running out for us. That would be my preference. Counselor Emo, please.
Thank you. I, I sat and thought about this for a few minutes. The, I, I tend to agree with Counselor Donahue. I think based on your comments, Warden, the, the OHT, it sounds like AMO has developed an interest in it at your urging. And, and so I think it's fairly fresh to the table in terms of getting to the frigging minister. And so, sorry about that. And, and so with the, with the public health funding, that was announced about eighteen months ago. And I don't think anybody's gotten any traction on it and the government, I think, has ignored it. And it's good to see the postman join us today. And so, you know, I would like to see that stay on the table as well as, as, as well as VTAC in terms of ranking a one, two, and a three. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Counselor Emo. And you do make a good point. I know definitely, I don't know what AMO's exact plans are around the Roma delegations. But I do know that the EOWC, the OHTs are, are number one on our list to speak to with, with the ministers. Any other comments? Counselor Donahue, please, sir.
Thank you, Madam Warren. With regards to Counselor Murphy's comments, it may be a moot point, actually. I suppose it is worth discussing which one should we be provided the option of doing this. But that these have been submitted, it, it, I would suggest it is beyond our control as to what the, the gist of the delegations would be that we have already submitted these.
I, I never assumed that we can't change. And I think that, you know, John Yakubowski has been an ardent supporter of VTAC. He's very aware of the situation. So if he can't get us in to see the minister, I would, I would be asking him to exert his influence to change the topic of, of one of these delegations. Counselor Donahue, please.
I wonder then perhaps if this is, is, is something that could be facilitated outside of why it would necessarily have to be tied directly to Roma. Perhaps it could even be accelerated. That is not happening until January. Perhaps that could be accelerated.
That is definitely my hope. We will, we will see. So I guess I just, I, I need some direction. You know, so I guess what I'm asking is for someone to make a motion either that we, we, if we need to, to change one of these topics or to leave the topics of the delegations as is. Counselor Donahue, please.
I would move, Madam Chair, that the, it be amended such that a delegation on the Virtual Triage and Assessment Centre takes the place of the delegation on the Ontario Health Teams.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hit that twice. You have a second or, and Counselor Emo, I believe, and Counselor Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Warren. I was just going to second it.
Okay. So I have Counselor Donahue making a motion, Counselor Emo seconding, seconding it. Any other comments? Counselor Sweet, please, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Warden. Is it my intention, not my intention, but your intention to, between now and, and the Roma, to try and get a private audience with the minister on the VTAC situation?
It is.
And I would certainly support that. I think that, that is much more valuable than the fifteen minutes that you get talking at, at the Roma situation. And certainly I would support that. But, you know, going forward on, on the Roma delegations, yeah. But I think it's important enough that every effort should be made by itself to have a, a one-on-one with the, with the minister on this issue.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other further comments? Counselor Peckett, please, sir.
Thank you, Warden. I'm in agreement with Mayor Sweet on this one. I think the, the one-on-one with your, with yourself and Chief Nolan and other staff members would be more beneficial to VTAC than as the fifteen minutes at Roma. I would like to see the fifteen minute at Roma left as discussion on the health coming. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Morrow, please. Just want to share the screen, show the resolution. I mean, my hope would be that when we get to the inaugural meeting on the fourteenth of December, I can update everyone on, on the, my attempt to see if we can meet with the minister. So you see the motion in front of you? Counselor Donahue.
Thank you, Madam Warren. I just, as the mover, I'm certainly, the, the two components, I am certainly satisfied with. However, I would suggest that they be reversed. In fact, that, that the warden be directed to pursue a separate meeting with, be, be directed to pursue a meeting with the Minister of Health, re, a discussion on the future of VTAC. Should this be unsuccessful, that, that a discussion on VTAC supplant the delegation on Ontario Health Teams at the Roma Conference in January. I think that just an inverse order.
Just give Mr. Morrow a moment to do that. Sorry about the spelling. Don't worry about the spelling. We, we know what you're saying.
Paul's having some spelling issues.
Got a lot of people staring at him as he's typing. Is that better?
I would just suggest removing the words separate in the very first line.
Can you take it at the end, further at the end? All right, time. Move for a second or good with the wording?
I am satisfied, Madam Warren.
Any other further comments? Seeing none. All in favor of the motion as presented? Carrie, thank you very much, folks. Let's see what we can do. Item number thirteen, the vaccination policy. Counselor Reinwald, would you like to speak to this, sir?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Again, I want, must say that I'm not, I'm not in favor of this. And mainly because of showing proof of vaccination of each individual's moral rights, you know, it's their privacy information. Just recently, the City News Toronto reported that data breach with the vaccine portal. Before it says the OPP are now investigating a possible data breach with the province online vaccine back port. Also in the report, I'm not in favor of council being included with the staff in this report. But we are elected officials and I don't believe that we should be incorporated into, into that report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir, for your comments. Are there any other comments concerning the vaccine, vaccination policy? Sorry. Seeing none, I will ask for move, Counselor Reinwald, please, sir.
Do we have this recorded again, please?
Absolutely recorded vote. So we're all clear. We're voting on the vaccination policy as presented in the FNA report. Do I now need a next, a new mover and seconder for this? Okay. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please, for the vaccination policy? Counselor Reinwald, you, you wanted to move or second this policy?
Yes, I can move it.
Okay. And seconded by Counselor Donahue. No, you have a question, sir?
Through you, point of order, through you, Madam Warren, to Mr. Morrow. It does seem to me that on, on presentation, the Chair of the Committee did read the resolution, identified it was moved by Chair and seconded by Committee. Whether severed or not, it seems to me that it was moved onto the table for consideration by council.
Thank you, Warden. I'm not clear on the answer to that, so we did ask for move in a second or just to make sure. But Counselor Donahue raises a good point. I'll have to seek clarification for the future on that particular aspect. So I, I will do that, but for the purposes of today, he raises a good point, but we did ask for a separate mover and a seconder once it was separated.
Counselor Donahue.
And, and it seems that this falls to me often. I'm assuming that i- if it is being done so, then the resolution number will no longer apply as well. It is no longer a Finance and Administration Committee resolution. Now it is a resolution of council.
Just a moment. All right.
It'll take you some time.
Okay, we're going to go with a mover and a seconder and for now, and, and Mr. Morrow will certainly look it up at some point to make sure we're, we're following the process properly. So I have moved by Counselor Reinwald. I, do I have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Doncaster. Counselor Reinwald has requested a recorded vote, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'm assuming you're going to let me share my screen. Okay, with that then, I will start the recorded vote for or against. And I'll start with Counselor Bennett, for or against, sir?
For.
Thank you. Counselor Bros, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Counselor Doncaster, for or against?
For.
Counselor Donahue, for or against?
For.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Emo, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Counselor Grills, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Counselor Hunt, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Counselor Keller, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Counselor Love, for or against?
For.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Lynch, for or against?
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Murphy, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Pickett, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Counselor Riggiar, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Counselor Reinwald, for or against?
Against.
Thank you, sir. Counselor, or Warden Robinson, for or against? Thank you. Counselor Sweet, for or against?
For the motion.
Thank you, sir. And Counselor TG, I believe, is absent. Therefore, the motion passes 193 to 6.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Our next committee report is Community Services Committee. Counselor Bros, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Beginning on page 270. To members of County Council, we, our Community Services Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information item number one is the 2021 Ontario Municipal Social Services Association Local Municipal Champion Award, and I certainly want to extend my congratulations to our Community Services Department for an exceptional job that they have done in receiving this award. I say it's very, very well deserved. And to achieve this reward during a pandemic is even more remarkable. So congratulations. Information item number two is the third quarter Community Housing Registry waitlist statistics. Item number three are the move-ins, moves-out, and the internal transfers comparison for 2021. Item number four are the Consolidated Homelessness Prevention Initiative, the Chippy 2021 Third Quarter. And it's the update. Part of that is also the homelessness prevention program. And the Ontario Works caseload is item number five. Item number six is the inclusion services statistics. Item number seven is the Licensed Home Childcare Statistics. Item number eight is the licensed childcare statistics. Item number nine is the Annual Early Childhood Education Professional Development Day, which was held last Friday, and I want to thank Judy Muldehill for inviting me to present the opening address. Under bylaws, number 10 is the Amendment to Bylaw 50-17-County of Renford New License Home Agreement. Resolution number CSCC-21-11-60. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that the Community Services Committee recommends to County Council that bylaw number 50-17, authorizing the County of Renford to enter into agreement with licensed home childcare service providers, be amended to enter into an agreement with Sandra Swain, who's located in Eaganville, and the background information is attached. Item number 11 is the Service Agreement with Boncharalgonquin First Nation. Resolution number CSCC-21-11-61. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that the Community Services Committee recommends to County Council that bylaw number 13-15, authorizing the County of Renford to enter into an agreement with licensed childcare providers for the purpose of childcare services, be amended to enter into an agreement with Boncharalgonquin First Nation for the purpose of operating a licensed childcare center in Herman Street Public School in Etowah, Ontario. Again, the background information is attached. And addendum, which is item number 12, is the Phase 2 for 3 Nelson Street Fence Project in Pembroke. Resolution number CSCC-21-11-68. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council approve that tender SSRF Phase 2-03 be awarded to Ballpro Construction in Brampton, Ontario, to supply and install additional fencing of 24 units at 435-481 Nelson Street, Pembroke, Ontario, in the amount of $270,000 and $270,623 plus HST. And further, that County Council pass a bylaw to authorize execution of the contract.
And that's my plan to respond.
And all of this is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and Committee members, Grills, Love, Riggiar, Reinwald, and Robinson.
Thank you very much, Chair Bros. We've started item number one. Under information, the 2021 Ontario Municipal Social Services Association Award. Certainly, at the Ontario East Municipal Conference, Minister Steve Clark mentioned the County of Renford. And so it's with a lot of pride, and congratulations to Laura and her group. Counselor Reinwald, please, sir.
Thank you, Warden. I'd just like to sort of give the big shout out to Laura and her team. It's just remarkable what they've done. You know, the time that I've been within the Community Services Group, or previously Social Services, it's just phenomenal how they've been able to pull things together and and the staff is just unbelievable. I'm so proud to be sitting on that committee and be able to listen and hear what they have to say and everything they they do, it seems to turn to gold. So just keep up that great work that you're doing. Thank you.
I'll send, sir. Are there any other comments? Item number one. Number two, the Housing Registry Waitlist. Three, the move-ins and move-outs. Four, homelessness prevention. Five, Ontario Works caseload statistics. Six, inclusion services. Seven, the licensed childcare statistics. Eight, licensed childcare statistics. Number nine. Early education workshop, which is always incredible, and it's amazing how so many of the staff throughout Renford County who are involved with childcare take the day off and attend it. I had an opportunity to speak to just one staff person, and she was she was so very happy. It's incredible training that they receive every year, and Judy brings in some exceptional speakers. Number 10, under bylaws, new licensed home. 11, the service agreement between Boncharalgonquin First Nation. And number 12, the fencing at Nelson Street. Counselor Donahue, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. It appears to me, in the background or context, that this has been an ongoing somewhat of a legacy. I think this was the third time, perhaps, it was put out for tender. So it seems to me that it was a 2021 expenditure, or it was a planned 2021 expenditure. Certainly, that, the initial tender process yielded to no bids, has slowed it down. But I am I think that this is the first time when this council has given consideration towards funding essentially a 2021 initiative in a 2022's budget or the following year's budget. So I am somewhat surprised at that, and certainly would seek clarity from staff if that is so. Ultimately, with the net HST, the total cost of the proposed tender is just under 275,000, just under 195,000 has been received from the SSRF funding, leaving a gap of just under $80,000. So my question ultimately is, that $80,000 is being proposed to be budgeted for in 2022. Yet, when, and albeit these were the unaudited financial statements in April, cited a closing capital reserve balance at December 31 of the Art Renford County Housing Corporation's capital reserves, 4.3 million. We had budgeted to transfer out of those reserves over the course of 2021, 1.776 million. Ultimately, that leaves just over 2.5 million dollars in capital reserves. So I question, or recommend, rather, it seems to me that in the past, typically, this would be something that the provision for unallocated funding might be tapped into, given that it is a 2021 initiative. If that is unavailable, if there are no funds available in that provision, I do question why it would be budgeted in next year's budget as opposed to drawn from reserves this year.
Mr. Morrow, please.
Thank you for that, Chair. This is somewhat of a unique situation in that it has been ongoing for some time. Our challenge moving forward is, as the report indicates, that the large majority of funding is coming from the SSRF2 pot of money, which is originally allocated in 2020, I believe, correct, Laura? And with that, we're moving it forward now. I know Mr. Foss will also jump in here and note that because of the uniqueness of this situation and the approval that we have received from the Province of Ontario to expand that money in 2022, but award the contract now moving forward. So we secure the contractor. Again, part of the challenge is securing, is acquiring the contractor and making the commitment to award the contract so the work can be done, and it will be done and paid for in 2022. You know, in our environment we're in now with materials, and we talked a little bit about this at committee, it has been very difficult to get some assurances as to costs and get that commitment to continue on moving forward. Because, for example, recently discussing with some of my colleagues, the cost of steel, contractors are only guaranteeing those prices for five days. So again, we're now in a position where we have to make a decision. One, because of the commitment the Province of Ontario has made to us to allow us to continue to expand the money, and two, so we can secure the contractor for 2022. Maybe, if I may, Warden, I'll let Mr. Foss and Laura add to the response as well.
Yes, please do. Mr. Foss?
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Counselor Donahue's question. So the challenge that we have, of course, in order for us to record financial activities in the 2021 year, goods have to have been delivered before December the 31st, or services rendered, and that will not take place, as I understand it, in 2021. So these are 2022 financial activities. The majority of this will be covered through the SSRF fund. And Laura and her team have received approval from the Ministry to spend those funds in 2022. So the December 31st, 21 original deadline is not something that is restricting us. And because the payments will be made in 2022, the overage, the unfunded amount, will be included in the housing 2022 capital budget. Those dollars need to be approved and spent in the 2022 fiscal year. And so that's why we will record these items in 2022, impacting the 2022 budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foss. Ms. Lepin, would you like to speak on this issue as well, before I go back to Counselor Donahue?
Thank you, Warden, and certainly add through you to Counselor Donahue. In awarding this contract in 2021, at this point in time, it will allow the contractors to get a start in the work in the month of December. But as already mentioned, it is covered through the Social Services Relief Fund for the most part. It is affecting and improving and impacting our Renford County housing properties. So it is appropriate that any overage would be funded through the Renford County Housing Capital Project Budget. It is definitely an impact to our properties, and, you know, we do have this permission to carry it into the next year. It is something that we submitted to the Ministry back in the fall of 2020 with the work to be planned in 2021. But as already mentioned by CEO Morrow, it has been a very difficult year in trying to even secure contractors, let alone materials. Hopefully, that answers some of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Lepin. Counselor Donahue, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Through you, was this budgeted for, for the top-up funding, if I might use that terminology of whether it be the county levy, whether it be reserves, et cetera? Or was it initially anticipated that the SSRF would have covered 100% of the cost of this?
Director Lepin, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you for that question, Counselor Donahue. The anticipate, so when we submitted our investment plan for this particular project, we had, our staff had scope down prices, and the pricing that was submitted was $194,880. That was what the pricing was looking like last year. With the unsuccessful tenders, and then the tenders coming in, and our knowledge and our experience so far this year with escalating prices, we budgeted and got approval by the Ministry for what the cost was at the time that we put it forward. The additional costs are not something that they are able to fund, because this is a limited funding, and the increased cost is more reflective of the market. So it's not that they, had we known that the market would have been this inflated at this point in time, we would have definitely submitted a higher amount. But we did our due diligence. Our staff were very good at seeking out contractors at the time to get quotes for what it would cost. But that was last year's pricing. Thank you.
Counselor Donahue, supplementary.
Final supplementary, thank you, Madam Warden. So I understand the intent now is, perhaps, before the price changes once again, we can lock down a price. Certainly can stand behind that. What I will say is, in budgeting for 2022, it remains certainly at the discretion of council how it desires to fund that, whether it would be through the RCHC going forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Counselor Donahue. I think that the families who reside on Nelson Street will be thrilled with this improvement. If anyone cares to go on Google Maps and Google those residents, you will see that the front yards of these homes are very, very narrow, followed by a sidewalk, followed by a very, very busy street in the city of Pembroke. So this is going to be the quality of life issue for the folks who are living in these homes on Nelson Street. Any other further discussion? On item number 12. Seeing none. The report as a whole. Counselor Bros, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Warden, and I just wanted to say thank you to the senior leadership team, the committee members and county councils for all of the support that I received in my role as Chair for the past year. And of course, the excellent work of our community services staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, the report as a whole? Seeing none. Do I have a mover?
So moved, Madam Warden.
Thank you. All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Chair Sweet, Development and Property Committee, please, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Warden. Members of County Council, we, our Development and Property Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows of information items. The first one is the Planning Division Activity Tracker, which can be found on page 305. You see, it's been a very, very busy year with planning. Behind page 305, up to 310, there's a number of information items I think we'll find useful with all the municipalities that the Planning Division have been looking after. You can see there in this report that the information item, over 719 residential lots have been approved compared to 391. And we can certainly look at that as a COVID situation, and things are coming out a little bit, and more development is coming on stream. Item number two, the Reconciliation Garden. I think important Put forward a request for quotation, and to begin the process to move the project forward with hopes of having the installation completed by the fall of two thousand and twenty two. Item number three, the Canadian Nuclear Laboratories, you find that information on page three hundred and eleven. I think of importance there, this is with regards to the near surface disposal facility of importance to us at this point in time. There will be two public hearings going forward on the approval of this particular, or potential approval. On this one is on February the first, two thousand and twenty two, and the next after that would be on May the thirty first. This information, as I say, can be found on page three hundred and eleven and three hundred and twelve. And I think somewhere along the line, there'll be an opportunity perhaps for county council to, to speak to the, to this initiative at that time with, with the Canadian Nuclear Safety Group. The item number four, the County Harvest Operations, you see approximately one hundred and thirty percent of the, the actual bid price has been received, and the information pertaining to that is on page two ninety nine. Item number five kind of speaks a little bit to the item number one, really, in a sense, Planning Service Agreements. Some of, of the local councillors and county councillors have requested, what, what is it we do? Or what does planning do? You can see that there are three different functions. The first one you, you see is kind of approvals at the local official plan. And please, as you know, this was as a result of the, of some substantial work on OP thirty one, which allowed the county to be the approval agent. It's thus by not only saving time, but saving a substantial amount of money that's finding that the planning process is concerned. Local Services, you can see there. Local level on many occasions, special projects, item number C, official plan, comprehensive zoning bylaws, or special studies, you can see there, that we, we heard this, this morning on the cannabis study, for example, and pre consultations under D are there as well. So I think it's fair to say that the Planning Department has been very, very busy over the last little while, and will continue to do so. Under resolutions, Rentford County ATV Club donation, the Algonquin Trail, moved by the Chair and second by committee, that county council accept the monetary donation of forty thousand dollars from the Rentford County ATV Club, and further, this amount will be placed in the Algonquin Trail Reserve Account to be used at a future date. Have to say, on behalf of certainly the ATAC group and the Ottawa Valley Recreation Trail, forty thousand dollars from this group is, is greatly appreciated, just by way of a bit of an, an overview or background on, on that. This is a club that probably is the largest single club that we have in, in Rentford County of any clubs, really. When you think about where they were six or seven years ago, with a club of only fifteen to twenty individuals, now are in excess of over three thousand members that are using the Algonquin Trail and associated trails within Rentford County. So that's a great partnership that we have here, and it's, it's, you can see forty thousand dollars, along with opportunities as well with graders and maintenance on, on the trails. Under bylaws, delegation of consent authority, the resolution number DP CC twenty one, did I read the resolution, the first one? I'm sorry, I don't believe I did. Yes, I did, sorry to me. Resolution number DP CC twenty one eleven one oh eight, moved by Chair, second by council, by committee, that county council pass a bylaw, to amend bylaw twenty seven eighty three, to remove the township of McNab as a consent granting authority, starting January the first, two thousand and twenty one, and further, bylaw thirteen ninety, delegated consent granting authority to the township of McNab Brayside is hereby repealed. That information starts on page three hundred and fifteen, with all the various requirements passed by McNab Brayside, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair, committee members, Emon, Keller, Lynn, Schreger, Reinhold, Robinson, and T J.
Thank you very much, Chair Sweet. So we'll go back to the beginning of your report. Item number one is the Planning Division Activity Tracker. Any comments? Counselor Hunt, please.
Yes, thank you, Warden. Through the Chair to Craig. Craig, on the Activity Tracker, just a couple, a couple items where it says monthly total, I believe that should be year to date total. And I'm wondering if you can explain what other inquiries, and that's just my ignorance on this, when other inquiries are.
Director Kelly?
Through you, Warden. Thank you, Counselor, for the question. Yeah, we'll double check. It should probably be year end total, what we were using was a template that we do these quarterly, and it might even been quarterly total, have to go through. It's probably quarterly total as opposed to monthly total. And then they could be, because you also have a, should be two thousand and twenty one year end total at the end. Anyway, double check, we'll double check and confirm at the next time we do this. Other inquiries, gosh, we get lots of inquiries, Counselor, from, can I sever, can I, what do I have to zone, do a new site plan, just other inquiries that, that we get from applicants or potential applicants of, of general in nature. They can't necessarily go into one of the, the following. So other inquiries is really the general inquiries, excuse me, the general inquiries that we get.
Okay, so.
Go ahead, supplementary.
That's supplementary. So first of all, on the report, Craig, the two thousand and twenty, I think, should stay as two thousand and twenty, we added that a year ago as a comparative. So I think, and I think the numbers are actually year to date, but I'm sure you can have staff look into that. The other thing is, on other inquiries in previous years that had always run in the two hundred range, except in two thousand and twenty for some reason, and I didn't catch it at the end of two thousand and twenty and ask the question, it jumped up to seven sixty nine. So I wonder if you're having staff look into that, if perhaps we should look and see if that's seven sixty nine is actual, or if there could have been an error in that?
Yep.
Certainly, Counselor, we'll take a look. Okay, and I appreciate the interest on other inquiries, and I'm hearing that that's external, not internal. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you.
Through you, Warden.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. Counselor Donahue, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I just wanted to comment briefly, the, I think this is outstanding. I think also the, the Activity Tracker is showing a trend that's reversing, I don't know, ten years, I think, of, of a downward trend with respect to consent applications. Enormously pleased to see this. I know that, that many of these will have actually been undertaken under the, the odious twenty five, and now we are in the, the very welcome thirty one. So I am anticipating something even more on the horizon. So very pleased to see the growth happening in the county of Rentford.
Thank you, Counselor Donahue. Any other comments, Counselor Hunt?
Sorry, I missed one other question. So this, where this used to be a monthly report, and now we're getting it, I believe this is the second time this year. I'm wondering, are we going to get a, a year end report? And to me, this is a, quite an informative report. I'm wondering if it, should it minimum be a quarterly report?
Director Kelly?
It will be really, what it, through you, Warden, what we've done is, it's quite an exercise to do, and we appreciate that it's very informative. With the limited staff that we've had over the last six months or so, we did eliminate down to twice a year. Year end, of course, we can't do, we don't have a meeting in December, but possibly we could look at updating for the January meeting and doing it. We prefer every six months or biannual, but we can look at that perhaps with the committee and, and what they're comfortable with when we establish the committees in January.
Correct.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments, item number one? Seeing none. Item number two, the Reconciliation Garden. Number three, CNL. For the County, County Forest Harvest Operations. Number five, Planning Service Agreements. Counselor Hunt, please.
Thank you. So through you to, to Craig. Craig, am I understanding that this is kind of how we are doing it now, but when you reach out to all the municipalities and look for how we're going to get into agreements and what they're wanting, that another planning agreement or service proposal will come in front of council to show what you're planning for the future?
Director Kelly?
Thank you, through, Warden. So yes, you're entirely correct. This is how we're doing it for the most part with most municipalities. We don't have an agreement with any municipality formally. So we are just looking at formalizing and, and understanding the levels of, of execution and levels of staff capacity, and, and also levels of communications that we need to, to do with every municipality that, that uses us either in part or in whole. There are some municipalities that want a little piece of us, and, and some municipalities that want all of our services. So I think what this does is just clarify that relationship so there's no uncertainties, what, what the relationship means to them, and should there be an additional charge for a special project, then we're clear right from the get go on what that, that may or may not be.
Counselor Hunt?
Supplemental. Thank you for that. And one item that was identified by Strategy Core, and I didn't see it in the list here, and on page five, they mention it, of Strategy Core, and on page nine, provincial changes, it said that many lower municipalities indicate they struggle to keep up with provincial changes and announcements related to the planning policy. This is one that I'm quite concerned about because when they come out with a mandate change such as in front of us now is proposed additional delegation of planning decisions, I know it hasn't been approved yet, but if that comes out, it frustrates me when I see seventeen municipalities trying to create, you know, a bylaw for that, and that's a perfect example of where the power of the county could really help us, you know, by forming a group and getting it done all at once, either the county doing it, or the group taking it between a few to do. So I'm just wondering if that should be added to make sure we don't miss it in going forward.
Director Kelly?
Again, through you, Warden, and thank you for the comment. No, absolutely not missed at all, as part of the strategic review, that the request or the suggestion that the county take a leadership role in providing that, that information to local municipalities. So councilors, councilors are aware regularly, maybe not as regularly as it could happen, the local municipalities, at least those with planning staff or planning assistants or some type of planning, a person appointed, meet and, and discuss items of general interest, much like some of your public works directors do and, and C O groups do. So what we are planning when, when we're fully up and running in January is Mr. Howarth will lead that with his colleagues and get those planning officers together at a more regular basis, perhaps every couple of months or every month, just to go over, is anybody having any problems or any new updates? What can we share? Yes, that is on the horizon, that new, that new legislative authority that's coming down the pipe from the province. And what I would suggest is that, we've done it already, the committee is, is giving update on what this will mean, but if it comes into force, then we will do a full report and, and allow that out to, in a memo format to your CEOs and planning staff on, on what it means and what it could, how it could assist you in the future with your, your planning files moving forward. But not missed, I don't know if it needs to be part of the, respectfully, don't need to, doesn't need to be part of the M O U, but definitely as, as an action item for myself and this department, is definitely on our radar. It, it does sit beside me, Counselor, just so you know, and, and we refer to it often.
Counselor Hunt, please.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you. I guess when I read through it and I didn't see it, I just think it's such an important item that it should be identified as a service. So anyway, I'll have faith that it will be addressed and come out in the new proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hunt. I'm sure the director will take it under consideration. Any other comments? Item number five. Number six, the ATV Club Donation. Not going to say no to this. It's absolutely fantastic. Number seven, delegation of consent authority. Counselor Donahue, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I'm quite certain that there's been much back and forth. I just wanted to confirm, within the township of Adamas and Bromley, the Committee of Adjustment is simply tasked with minor variance, or essentially minor variance, that that is the, the entity within McNab Brayside that was the consent granting authority.
Director Kelly?
Through you, Warden. Yes, sir, that, that's, that is correct.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments, item number seven? Seeing none. Report as a whole. Do I have a mover?
So moved, Warden.
Thank you. All in favor, through four is presented. All right, thank you very much. Ontario Winter Games Update. Counselor Emo, please, sir.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to counsel, Rose was kind enough to reformat my scribblings and send them out to you earlier. Without what I can, I'll just briefly go through this. The hundred day event was held on November sixteenth, and it was a, it was a, a nice, high-energy kickoff, really re enthused our committee, and I think what was very important to them was to hear from the, from the minister and from the warden, how, how much their work has been valued to date, and everybody was recognizing it's, it's new times and challenging times for, for the committee as, as they worked very hard to, to bring thirty five hundred athletes and participants into our community in, in February, late February and early March. So they, they were very, very grateful to hear the, the remarks, and, and I have to, to compliment both the minister and the warden on the accuracy of their observations and, and just showing their, demonstrating their knowledge about, about how much work it took to, to strike out as we have. As, as the warden has mentioned, Minister MacLeod announced that we have received an extra four hundred thousand dollars in, in funding, which will assist us in, in producing the games. We want to be very clear, we're not, we're not doing the COVID games, we're doing the best games ever. We're going to turn on a quality project, and, and, you know, everybody in the room agreed with that, and subsequently in our chairs meetings as well. We outlawed, we had a fashion show and brought out our merchandise, so you'll see some of that in the next little while, some very nice plaid shirts, some, and some hats and tuques, and some other, other clothing as well. We had some fiddlings, step dancing, some great speeches. I saw Counselor Hunt and Counselors Weekend ready to get up on the stage, and unfortunately, the music ended too early, but maybe next time. So thank you to both of those members for being there as well. And fencing demonstration, and very delightful young nine-year-old girl was there with her instructor, quite precocious and talented, and it was great to see her, her demonstrate the fine art of, of fencing. Progress, number one, accommodations. We're, we have all the rooms booked, and we're following up on contracts, and we're starting to assign some rooms, and we will be sending out some funds to, to secure those, to some of the hotels. I should note, we'll be using some bunk houses as well, we're working on those. We, we did receive free one hundred cots from the Aurelia Winter Games, and we'll be putting those into some larger areas. For the most part, we'll be booking people into rooms, two, two in a room, and in some instances, three or four of the rooms larger by, by using cots. Venues are all booked, we're following up on contracts, there'd be a few more P S O visits, meaning the provincial sporting organizations will come in, take a look at the venues just one last time, to make sure they're, they're totally aware of what, what the venue looks like and how traffic flow at the venue and, and the associated facilities. Transportation, our quotes are in. We're working on some of the financial changes and the number of buses. We think we have some ideas to reduce it. It's still a fairly large number. I won't, I won't bring fairly large number. I won't, I won't bring it back to the to council until we're until we've got it nailed down. Sport technical. Each event has to have a manager and coordinator on site. And so we have those assigned for the duration of the games. And they'll be meeting with the PSOs just to go on so they fully understand their roles and and what's expected of them and how to react. Special events, we're working on the two opening ceremonies with announcements to come in the next little while. Volunteers. We believe we have a little over 400 now. And so we're starting to push for the special interest volunteers. Special interest volunteers are people who have a history of working in Baiafuan or skiing or attending meets or participating or or hockey or any of the other events. And so we knew that that would be our our third push was to get was to get those folks out. And they're and now those communities are expecting that as well. Food services, meaning tomorrow to start putting the putting the final touches on those those kinds of plans. Costs are likely to be up by about 25%, but we've we've accounted for that in our in our application to the province for supplemental funding. We haven't done much with that now to date because we didn't have the venue times nailed down and the and the accommodations nailed down. So now that we have those, we can start putting the food packages together. And as you're aware from the bid document, there is a there is a standard and what has to be included. And so that will always will always cause a little extra cost, but it's worthwhile to ensure that the athletes have the proper nutrition and proper balance in their diets. Security, we're getting the plans in place. There's lots of moving parts, given the number of venues and the number of the number of accommodation sites that we have. And so we're working on those. Just as I note in there, you know, we've got venues and rooms of sleeping and food from Deep River to Ottawa to Barry's Bay. So it's quite a quite a large area, but we think we've got it a good plan that we're putting in place. Medical, we're getting supplies and specific staff to the proper sport and venue. And we're looking for four doctors. Some of the activities have to have a doctor on site or readily available. So we're working that out. We're in the process and we recruited a person who is going to be a separate chair or a person who'll be looking after COVID planning and our COVID response plan and all the policy that goes with it. It was getting to be too much for one person to do as well as wrap up with medical or for Cindy to do. And so we're we found someone and it's just a matter of working through some of the details with them, make sure they understand the understand the role and then also start plugging them into the into our community. Registration, we're making some online systems improvements, the COVID waiver, for instance, and immunization status. We have to be able to capture those things. So that's ongoing. Administration, our swag is out, as I'd mentioned, and we're working on the loot bag. And there's a competitors handbook that will inform them of our our community. Marketing communication, we are in the process of of up ramping our social media and advertising. Probably in the middle of December and well, and after the Christmas season as well. But you'll see more and more stuff coming out from us. Logistics, we're getting a tractor trailer load of stuff from Toronto. And so we're chasing down some warehousing space. We have someone who's donated some space in Pembroke, and we have some ideas for rent room, which which we're working out. We're going to have two spots to be able to pull things from. And when I say a truckload of stuff, it's essentially signage, podiums, banners, other things that show up in the background shots of 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 events when you're watching it on T S N or some some other show. Accessibility. Venues have been reviewed. We're now looking at special events and accommodations, meaning just making sure that there's good access for everybody. Sponsorship, we have a commitment of about $100,000 with another 25 on the horizon. And most recent announcement by Holcomb and Sons of 15,000, they they have donated all of the shirts for our volunteers and a beautiful shirt. And and Mr. Heidman, when we met with him, he's quite effusive to our community for making an application and and very supportive of going forward with these games. And he has said, you know, with the pandemic, he is, his business has done very well, and he wants to give back to the community. And he also recognizes the partnership he's had with the county over the years as they've supported his industry. So it was it was a very enjoyable conversation with him a couple of weeks ago when I was out to to receive the check. We're also hoping to get another 75,000 in sponsorships to to feel comfortable. So we've got some leads that we're chasing right now. And in terms of budget, we're revising it to reflect the costs of COVID and to resubmit to the ministry because we have to amend our transfer payment agreement. And so we'll be doing that shortly. And as I said, when we get the budget a little a little more current, we'll get back to you with it and present it to you. Week one, you see the events, just letting you know where they are, what the what the dates are and the venues. So you can see just how how complex our scheduling is, but also it allows you the opportunity to maybe plan some time to attend some of these events as we get a little closer to the games. Upcoming events and next moves, December four, five and six, we'll have a presence of Rogers Hometown Hockey in in Pembroke. Rogers and the city of Pembroke have been very generous in in offering us some space to to inform the public about about the Ontario Winter Games. And so we're very thankful for their continued interest and support. December, a very, a number of Santa Claus parades, we're in the process of compiling a list and seeing if we can work out a way to have volunteers attend to inform about the Ontario Winter Games. As it says, we're chasing sponsors. So if you have any sponsors or information or potential leads, if you pass them to me, I'll make sure we get them out to our folks who are beating the bushes for sponsorship and relationships. We're doing some council appearances as well. I think I'm in our prior on December the ninth. And we're still recruiting volunteers. So if you know of anybody that's interested, they can go on our website and and make applications on it live. The on it live feature allows you to bid, not bid, but submit an application for an actual job and a time slot. And it's a, and as I understand it, it will then send you notifications as you get closer to you to the event of where you're supposed to be and at what time. And we're, as always, cutting costs or curbing costs or working on relationships to keep the cost down. So that's what I can submit to to council through the warden. And thank you very much to the warden and committee for their support and especially to also to staff, Mr. Morrow, Craig Kelly, Alistair Baird, and everybody that they tap to give us instant answers and and instant access to to resources. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Counselor Emo. A couple of things. I'm really glad that you don't sleep because this is an awful lot of work. And I'm really hoping that following the second weekend of events that you have a a vacation planned, take some time off and recuperate.
It's probably going to be a little later in the year, but it's a lot of fun.
It's so, it's so very impressive. Any questions or comments? Counselor Sweet, please.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Peter, for that update. Perhaps just to confirm or reaffirm, if you will, the actual dates of of the event so that all members can put it in their their calendar. So if they're available, they would be able to to attend. It's over a two week period, two weekend period. But perhaps if you could just reiterate the dates, I think it would be useful for the rest of council.
Thank you. As I'm as I'm panic, panic stricken, looking through my calendar, I can say too that it's February, Thursday, February, I believe, the 20 23rd through until Sunday, the 25th. And again, it will be March the second, which is a Thursday through until March the sixth. The Thursday is an event for the most part, which is the opening ceremonies in both instances. And there is, I believe, one starting on March the second as well. I think it's some of the skiing because they have to try and keep away from the weekend. Thursday, March the second and February, the 23rd, I believe, are the are the start times. And I'll confirm that in a in the chat in a few seconds.
And the document that Rose sent everyone today, there is a schedule for week one and week two. Because it should be noted that there are a couple of events that are actually midweek as well. But it's it's all there in the report that was sent out this morning. Counselor Hunt, I saw your your hand up, sir.
Thank you through you, Warden, to Peter. Peter, the one thing we haven't discussed is the opening ceremony. Has that been finalized yet?
And no, we're we're, one of the struggles for us is to is to get a site that we have for two weeks in a row, the same site. I think that's the only way we can really run a a good opening ceremony, operate a good opening ceremonies without being chintzy and cheap. These are we have two separate, if we have two separate sites, we're not sure we can get the same quality. So we're likely to have an announcement in the next in the next week. We're in some conversations right now for one site. It'll be an outdoor site. Part of the challenge is to make sure it has electricity, seating for approximately 25 to 2,700 people, good traffic patterns in and out, relatively central to the county so that we in the county. So that when we're transporting the athletes back and forth either to their hotels or or we're thinking we may end up having them register at that site when they come Thursday night and then transport them from there. So it's a matter of trying to make the transportation budget as work as well. So that's been part of the transportation discussions is to is to work out a site that is best for everybody. But the reality is we have people staying in Ottawa, people staying in Deep River and some some in Barry's Bay. So we're 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 trying, we're trying to get everybody to come in. It's basically a starburst pattern from the outer regions in towards the middle. So we haven't really got a site nailed down yet. We're pretty close. And I'll be able to let everybody know probably in about another week, maybe two at the most.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Donahue, please.
Thank you, Warden Robinson. Not so much a question as a comment. I wanted to commend Counselor Emo and the entire organizing committee and yourself as well and Minister McLeod. I had the opportunity to attend the 100 day kickoff last week, and the the atmosphere in the room was electric. It was very energetic, very enthusiastic. Certainly have to commend the Minister McLeod for the the additional commitment of $400,000. I'm informed that the treasurer has begun to breathe once again on the organizing committee. So I think that that in that 100 days that we are now eight days into, I think certainly the 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 mood was set there and will endorse or second the comments of the ever ubiquitous Mr. Bramburger. I think that that certainly set the tone moving forward, and I'm very enthusiastically looking forward to the Ontario Winter Games. So congratulations on an outstanding event last week and what I'm sure will be the best ever Ontario Winter Games.
Thank you, Counselor Donahue. And yes, the the finance chair seemed to be rather pleased, I would say, with the announcement. Counselor Murphy, please.
I was beyond pleased. I think I went like this. So I want to thank you and Peter for not telling me. It was such a welcome surprise. And I think that that was the first time I've slept properly in about three weeks. Sort of stressing about the transportation budget and the food budget and and, you know, but as soon as Minister McLeod made the announcement, the vultures started circling. Everybody wants a piece of that money. So I've been warding them off. But yes, it was, it was an amazing event, so much fun. And yeah, I'm so, I'm so pleased to be part of this really, really incredible committee. We have chair meetings now every two weeks that Peter and Cindy chair for us. And, you know, I think that that everybody has bought right back in to the whole situation. We had a meeting the Wednesday right after the Tuesday event, and everybody seemed reinvigorated, to say the least. So I'm really excited. And I promise you, every drop of that money will be spent.
I have no doubt. My only question, Counselor Emo, is where do we purchase the swag? Because Christmas is coming, and I think that those would be great Christmas gifts for anyone who hasn't bought one yet.
We are very close to, and thank you, I should have mentioned that in my report, we're very close to having a storefront set up on the website. So there'll be a purchase option through the through the website. One of the challenges is that our local economy may not be used to using the website for such large, large purchases, large purchases, meaning I went, I ordered three button down shirts, two vests, winter jacket and three hats. And so that, you know, for them to process that and get it ready. And then you multiply that by a factor of 100 or 200 or 3,500. And so we're still sorting out how we're going to do that and how to ship it out. So we will be, we'll be announcing that fairly quickly because that's one of the priorities that we've been working on this week is to try and find the the right relationship. And do we put together consortium of companies that we're working with? Or do we stay with the one and hope they they upsize? So we're going, we will be announcing that again fairly soon, as soon as we get, as soon as we get a mechanism in place for it.
All right. Will you just tell me where where I need to go or how much I have to pay? And I'll do that as long as they arrive by Christmas. That's my my need. Any other comments? Seeing none, can I have a mover in a second to accept the report of the Ontario Winter Games Committee? Moved by Counselor Emo, seconded by Counselor Hunt. Any other further comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you very much. While I'm not exactly on schedule, lunch is going to be now. We will take a lunch break and come back at 12:40, please. So Sean, can you take us down? Good afternoon, everyone. I hope you enjoyed your luncheon break. I understand that I should be expecting a motion to rescind the the motion regarding the vaccination policy that was passed this morning. Counselor Donahue, Counselor Murphy. Any discussion? Counselor Donahue, please.
Perhaps, Madam Warden, just for the the those who may be watching, some background on the the nature of the rescinding.
Yes, please. I will ask actually Ms. Grunt to explain the differences between the the policy that we passed this morning and the one that was in fact supposed to be in our package.
If I may, Madam Chair, the policies that I just sent you this afternoon includes a couple of comments from our integrity commissioner, Mr. Gajiner, Giorno, sorry. So on page six in green, it reads as follows. Vaccination reduces the chance that you will get sick or infected if you are exposed to COVID-19. Workplace control measures reduce the chance of being exposed to the virus. COVID-19 vaccines do not replace the measures. An alleged breach of this policy or any other county rent for COVID-19 a control measure or policy by a council member shall be treated as an alleged breach of the council code of conduct.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grunt. So with that, Counselor Murphy.
Yeah, just again, for the edification of people that may be watching, that is what was passed at Finance and Admin. And I would like to apologize, I missed that it wasn't there in the packages that you got from from Rose.
That's just fine. So any other comments? If not, all in favor of rescinding the motion? Carried. Do I have a motion regarding the vaccination policy as just presented to us and that you all received during the lunch hour? Moved by Counselor Pickett, seconded by Counselor Lynch. Any discussion? Counselor Ryan Wall, sir. You're on mute.
Very much, Warden.
Very much, Warden. I just wondered if we could have a recorded vote on that again, please.
Absolutely, sir. Let's give Mr. Morrow a moment.
Warden, if I may, I'll proceed with the recorded vote.
Please.
Okay, Counselor Benefit, for or against, sir? Counselor Bros, for or against, sir?
For.
Counselor Doncaster, for or against? Counselor Donahue, for or against?
For.
Counselor Emo, for or against?
I am for.
Thank you. Counselor Grills, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Counselor Hunt, for or against?
For.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Keller, for or against?
For.
Counselor Love, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Counselor Lynch, for or against?
For.
Counselor Murphy, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Counselor Pickett, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Counselor Riggar, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Counselor Reinwald, for or against?
Against.
Thank you, sir. Warden Robinson, for or against? Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Sweet, for or against?
For.
Thank you, sir. And Counselor TG, I do not believe is with us. The motion passes one eighty-five to six.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morrow. Now we will turn it over to Chair Donahue for the Health Committee report, please, sir.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Deja vu all over again. Members of County Council, we, your Health Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information items to begin. Item one is community paramedicine for long term care. As council will recall, this was an initiative that certainly was cultivated within the County of Renfrew and the County of Renfrew Paramedic Services, very pleased that it has now been rolled out across the province of Ontario. Item two is a vaccine update. Item three, congratulations to Dr. Richard Johnson, nominated for the twenty twenty-one Ontario College of Family Physicians Early Years Award. Item four is the resident population at each of Bonnershire Manor and Miramichi Lodge. Item five is the Home and Community Care Support Services Client Waitlist Information across the County of Renfrew and each of the long term care homes. Item six, the new Long Term Care Act, Fixing Long Term Care Act twenty twenty-one. Inordinately pleased, finally, after all of these many years, that there is now the commitment towards the the long elusive four hours of care per resident per day. This is beginning that that journey. Item seven, Ministry of Long Term Care New Inspections Program. Item number eight is the extension, the further extension, this I believe is about the fourth or fifth extension of the Personal Support Worker Wage Enhancement Program. Item nine, Investments to Increase Direct Care Time for Residents Supporting Professional Growth Fund. As council is very well aware, for a number of years, there has been a challenge in in keeping the staff and attaining the the desired staffing levels within long term care home. County of Renfrew has developed some very innovative strategies to deal with this and certainly one of them has been an outstanding collaboration with Algonquin College towards towards the training of further professionals to assist in long term care. This is in keeping with that and is is with respect to to ensuring not only that those that longstanding challenge is met, but of course, as we are continuing towards that that desired goal of four hours of care, that we have the appropriate staffing in place. The funding to assist with this is contained within. Very pleased to see that ongoing funding and council certainly will note that it is increasing over time. Item ten is additional training for long term care nurses and personal support workers. And again, if there is a theme to today's Health Committee report, it once again is with respect to the human resource challenge that has been longstanding within long term care, both here and across the province of Ontario. And certainly this is also very welcome program towards towards increasing the skill set of those perhaps that are already working within long term care or considering entering the field. Moving on, Madam Chair, to resolutions. Pardon me. Item number eleven is the COVID nineteen pandemic update and long term care. Resolution number H dash C C dash twenty-one dash eleven dash one oh five. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that the Health Committee recommend that County Council direct the Warden to correspond with the Premier and the Honorable Christine Elliott, Minister of Health, urging a reconsideration of the province's decision not to mandate a vaccine policy. The background is attached and certainly the the initiative that we just undertook both before and immediately following lunch attest to the leadership of the County of Renfrew. It is certainly incumbent, in my estimation, in my opinion, that the province of Ontario follow suit. It will be also very gratifying that all of the members of County Council, perhaps within their own communities, will be considering a a vaccine policy as well. Bylaws, moving on. Item number twelve is intermunicipal billing, Lanark County. Madam Warden, resolution number H dash C C dash twenty-one dash eleven dash one oh three. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that the Health Committee recommend that a bylaw be passed at the next session of County Council to authorize the Warden and CAO to sign the twenty twenty intermunicipal billing agreement between the County of Renfrew and County of Lanark for provision and cost recovery of paramedic response through the Ministry of Health Seamless Service Delivery Legislation. The background is attached. Madam Warden, this has been a longstanding issue. It is very pleasing to see a step in the direction of returning once again to a reconciliation where the services in order to meet that seamless service delivery requirement that this is reconciling to the providers of that, given the the fifty percent cost share borne by the municipal sector. So very pleased, perhaps this can be somewhat of a template moving forward. All of which, Madam Warden, is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair, along with Committee members Bennett, Doncaster, Emo, Grills, Love, Murphy and Warden Robinson.
Thank you very much, Chair Donahue. We'll go back to the beginning of your report. Item number one, the Community Paramedics for Long Term Care. Any comments? Seeing none. Item number two, the vaccine update. Number three, the Ontario College of Physicians and Surgeons Early Years Award to Dr. Johnson. I have sent him a letter and he replied, he was very appreciative and very, very deserving of that recognition. Number four, the resident population. Counselor Doncaster, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. We had a bit of a discussion around this. There was a question to the Director at Health Committee with respect to the waitlist. I'm wondering, knowing that any given person can have the name on to up to five up to five homes, is there any way or do we have the data on, you know, how many repetitions there are in this list and what the actual waitlist may be?
All right. Thank you for that question, Counselor Doncaster. Mr. Blackmore, can you enlighten us?
Through Warden to Counselor Doncaster, I I imagine that is a number we can get. I don't know that number at the tip of my fingers, but I would hope that's a number we could could get derive that.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just thought, you know, if if those, and sorry, Madam Warden, if I might.
Absolutely.
You know, if you know, there's duplicates throughout this, then it's not, it's not us saying that there's this, whatever the total is here, sixteen hundred people on the waitlist. Maybe that's eight hundred. I don't know. So it's just a thought I had when I was thinking about that after our Health Committee. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that because we were trying to get that. It's okay, Mr. Blackmore, we were trying to know to drill down to know exactly what the exact numbers are, especially when we, you know, we're talking about lobbying problems for various things. So if that's something that is attainable, Mr. Blackmore, and you could perhaps bring it to our next Health Committee meeting, that would be beneficial. But go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt you either.
Sorry, Warden, through you to Counselor Doncaster. I think what we are able to determine is the ranking, like, i.e. how many of those individuals on this list, Miramichi Lodge, are born as their first choice. But certainly I recognize that it'd be important to know what the total number of people are that are on the list singly versus multiply.
All right. Thank you very much for that. So any other comments? Item number four. And five, I suppose. Six, fixing fixing Long Term Care Act. Number seven, Ministry of Long Term Care New Inspections Program. Number eight, the PSW Wage Enhancement. Number nine, the investment to increase direct care time for residents. It's nice to see that moving forward. We just have to have the bodies in place to provide that assistance. Number ten, additional training for long term care nurses and PSWs. Under resolutions, pandemic up update, long term care. Bylaws number twelve, the intermunicipal billing with Lanark County. The report as a whole. Do I have a mover?
So moved, Madam Warden.
Thank you very much. All in favor of the report as presented? Thank you very much. And our final report of the day, Operations Chair Pickett, please, sir.
Thank you, Warden. Members of County Council, Council. To be noted that there is an addendum to this report listed as item number six that you all should have received today as there was a special meeting of the Operations Committee earlier this morning. So we, your Operations Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Under information, item number one, your monthly status report on page three, three, six is attached, Appendix one. Item two, the capital variance, program variance report on page three, three, eight. And I will note that there is an error in the very first line of that report, Appendix two. Under the November projected, the number there should be three hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and nine dollars. And the carryover number should be five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This is a result of Elgin Street and Usborne Street in McNabb, not Usborne River Road, which is also Elgin Street, only partially being completed this year. Similar occurrence last year in County Road one at Sandpoint. So there'll be a carryover for for these two projects, both of them are not finished. The Elgin Street area is finished to a point where it can be used for the winter, but still needs several changes and repairs to it. Item three, County Road fifty-one, Pettawawa Boulevard. Myself, along with Mr. Perkins and Mr. Hanrath and the design team from AACOM, Valerie McGee and Michael Flank attended a meeting at the Town of Pettawawa Council on October the eighteen, twenty twenty-one. The main point of discussion was in regards to proposed five leg roundabout about attached as Appendix three at the intersection of County Road twenty-six, Dorn Road, County Road fifty-one, Pettawawa Boulevard, Hill Street and Moons Avenue. There is also a discussion on a four legged, a four leg roundabout conceptual design attached as Appendix four. Staff clarified that this project has no allocated funding for construction, but but with the completion of the amended environmental assessment and detailed design funding opportunities will be fully, funding opportunities will be fully explored. I reiterated my position to find funding not only for this project, but the completion of the four laning and the second bridge crossing the Pettawawa River River for County Road fifty-one. There will be no change to the design of the second roundabout, which is attached as Appendix five at the intersection of County Road fifty-five, Paquette Road, County Road fifty-one, Pettawawa Boulevard, Festivert Boulevard and Menon Road, which was approved through the original environmental assessment. The Town of Pettawawa, by resolution, which is attached as Appendix six, endorsed EA and amended as amended and the design as as presented. So very want to thank Counselor Sweet and and his counsel for having us there that evening. We straightened out a lot of things and got approval to move forward with the five leg roundabout and now we can start moving ahead with this entire project. Under item four, winter operations, a hundred percent fleet readiness by October twenty ninth. And the balance of winter items was achieved by November fifteenth. Under bylaws, County Road sixty-two, Compermere Road, resolution number OPCC twenty-one, eleven, one thirty-four, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council adopted bylaw to change the speed limit on County Road sixty-two, Compermere Road from eighty kilometers per hour to seventy kilometers per hour between Lake Shore Drive and five hundred meters south of Blueberry Point Lane. And further, that bylaw one oh three twenty-one to authorize speed limits be repealed. The background is there. There's an extensive amount of background for council's information. In view of the foregoing information, staff are in favor of creating a posted limit of seventy kilometers per hour between Lake Shore Drive and five hundred meters south of Blueberry Point Lane. Item number six, which is the addendum, County Road five twelve, Foymont Road, resolution of OPCC twenty-one, eleven, one thirty-eight, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council passed a bylaw to acquire lands located in part of Lot eighteen, Concession thirteen, in the geographic township of Sebastopol in the township of Bonnershire Valley, described as parts three, four, six, seven, eight and nine on Plan forty-nine R one nine nine one seven from Crises, Shamil and Laina Ferris for the amount of nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and eight cents. And further, that parts three, four, six, seven, eight and nine on Plan forty-nine R one nine nine one seven, be dedicated as part of the public highway upon registration of the transfer transfer documents. Background is there for your information. Before I end my report, Warden, I would just like to thank Mr. Perkins and his staff and in particular the day crew who I think is a lot of the council members. who I think is a lot of the council members are aware of the work that they did through the course of this year on installing culverts and especially some of the large ones, concrete culverts, and the pride they took in doing, doing that work. And certainly appreciated all they've done for that, excellent job. And for the entire year, I think the department operated very well. So thanks to all of them, all of which is respectfully submitted myself as Chair, committee members Bennett, Hunt, Keller, Lynch, Robinson, and TJ. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you very much, Chair Peckett, and your, your final comments were bang on. Incredible year for the culvert works department, for sure. We'll go back to the beginning of your report. Item number one, the monthly status report. Questions, comments? Number two, the capital program variance report. Three, County Road Fifty-One. Four, winter operations. Five. Hold please. Counselor Love.
Thank you, Warden. I just wanted, on behalf of Madawaska Valley Council, to thank the Operations Department, Mr. Perkins, and the Operations Committee for reviewing this situation and coming up with a solution that I know is going to make it safer for the individuals that have, are living along this road and all of the new people who are moving into this area. So I really do appreciate that they, they took a hard look at the situation and have provided us with a solution that will certainly bring some comfort to those we're getting, who are getting very concerned about the traffic speeds in that area. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Love. Any further on number five? And the addendum? Counsel Murphy, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thanks to Lee and his team. I'm sure Chris Shimmel is, is pleased to be a part of this, but knowing that they were not one of the originals that were holding this project up, can you just give an indication of where we might be with the other four, please?
Certainly happened because we did have that discussion this morning in operations, but I will turn it over to Director Perkins, please, sir.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and for you, Counsel Murphy. Right now, there's agreements in place that the paperwork is still being completed on. There are two individuals that Mr. Hanraff is working closely with, and we're actually gone back to our design team to see if we can alter the roadway around or probably to make it work. So another, another few more weeks of negotiation and checks.
I also understand that our staff will be in contact with yourself and council, just to brief everyone on where the, where everything is. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing now the report as a whole. Do I have a mover?
So moved, Warden.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. That ends our reports from committee. Now I'm looking for a mover and a seconder, that the bylaws listed on item thirteen and attached here to is Schedule A on the County Council agenda dated November the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, be deemed read three times and passed. Mover and a seconder, please. By Counsel Murphy, seconded by Counsel Bruce. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over for some written reports or verbal reports. AMO, Counsel AMO.
At this point, nothing to report. As you noted correctly, we're meeting on Friday, the twenty-sixth, and we'll have something in January. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Counsel Murphy, Eeyorn.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I don't have much to report, just that we are in the process of getting a new board member on board. That decision will be ratified by the entire board neck, sorry, the sixth. And we are in, in the middle of an RFP to help us with the hiring of a new CEO. Other than that, we are just keeping a very close eye on these small projects that are going ahead, these small broadband projects. And it was noted that Rogers is moving very quickly in the county of Renfrew with the cell gap. That's my report, Madam Warden.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Any questions of Counsel Murphy? Counsel Hunt, please.
Thank you. Through you to Counsel Murphy. Do you have any feeling for how many of the municipalities are using CRINS as opposed to going straight with Rogers for the cell towers?
I'm sorry, I, Counselor Hunt, you froze up on me there for a second.
So my question is. So my question is, do you have any feel for the number of municipalities throughout Eastern Ontario that are using CRINS as the consulting body rather than going directly with Rogers?
No, I don't, but I would be happy to find that out for you. At this point, I believe Rogers is the point of contact for, for all of us for the cell gap project.
Okay, so what we're finding is we, we, as a township, are using CRINS because we don't have the expertise in-house that if you get a contentious issue and it goes public, they handle the public meetings and, and so on. And I see by the leader that Killaloo recently, because they were faced with that, went that way. I know Rogers would prefer to go direct to us, but we are managing to make the paper flow quite quickly without going direct. So I was just wondering what Rentford County or Eeyorn as a whole was doing.
Madam Warden, I will find that out. I know that there have been some contentious issues in some areas, but in others, the paperwork's just flying through. So I will find out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions of Counsel Murphy? All right. Thank you very much, Counsel Murphy, for the update. Counsel Doncaster, I believe you are at FCM or an FCM event right now.
I am. Thank you, Madam Warden. Written report hasn't come yet. I did have a community safety and crime prevention meeting in November, which primarily focused around the opioid crisis and some panelists that we had come and do some presentations to the committee, which was very informative. And that discussion evolved into not only the opioid crisis, but mental health and some of the causes and effects and all of that. So I will put together some information on that. I am at FCM meetings. We've, we've changed the format. Normally, this time of year, we would be here in Ottawa at what we would have called advocacy days in the past, being an election year and the forty-fourth parliament has just begun sitting. It's, we wouldn't be able to get the ministers' meetings that we need, for sure. So we're basically running two and a half days of committee of the whole with a few off-committee meetings. There is, I do have a document that FCM is going to release tomorrow. Oh, let me back up one second. So we did have a couple of MP staff members with us this morning. And interestingly enough, there was a few comments made. There was actually a thank you to FCM for writing the throne speech. So, and the reason I say that is because pretty much everything that was in the throne speech is, is all of the stuff that FCM takes to the, to the three federal political parties consistently. The document that will be released tomorrow is titled, I believe, they may change the title, I don't know, Partners for Canada's Recovery. So it's, it's FCM's proposed solutions to the, the new Parliament of Canada in securing affordable housing, stronger communities, pathways to net zero, modern, modern transit and mobility issues, digital inclusion for all, all Canadians, and a resilient, resilient partnership between the federal government and municipalities across this country. And, and all the details that go into that. So as soon as I'm allowed to, I will share this document tomorrow. I don't know, after eleven o'clock or so. So that's my update for today.
All right. That sounds wonderful. What I am wondering, does FCM have a official position or recommendations when it comes to the opioid and, and, you know, drug overdose and mental health issue? And the reason why I'm asking that is that I part of the health task, AMO Health Task Force, that we will be meeting with Minister Tavolo again on Monday around this issue. And I'm if there was, if there was a document that FCM had, I would certainly bring that with me to the meeting.
I believe, well, there certainly, it is one of the policies of FCM, so there will be some documents. So I will, I will pull them this afternoon and send them to you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions of Counsel Doncaster? Again, you know, very pleased that you're part of FCM, that brings, brings Renfrew County voice and also brings communication out of the way for us. So thank you very much for that. Roma.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I was unfortunately unable to attend our last board meeting, but Counsel AMO did attend, and he's graciously offered to report. So I thank him on behalf of all of us for doing that. And if he could just proceed.
Thank you, and through, through the Warden to committee, or to council, sorry. We had a board meeting November twelfth, very quickly, and this was sent out to you, and so I'm just going to highlight a few things. The twenty twenty-one Roma Conference total revenue was four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, and there was the expenses weren't the same, and I'll have something for you a little later on as we get the final, the final numbers in on it. At our board meeting, we had Minister Thompson attend from Omafor to talk about the Drainage Act. Of note, the Drainage Act is one of the oldest, passed in nineteen, eighteen fifty-nine, amended in seventy-five and two twenty-one. Right now, the issue is that the railways, for some reason, assume that they don't have to fall under the auspices of the Drainage Act they had previously. For some reason, that something has happened. They've changed their mind, and some municipalities are really getting behind on some of their infrastructure and, and draining land. Just, there are more than forty-five thousand kilometers of municipal drains servicing approximately one point nine million hectares of, of the total three point six million hectares of cropland in Ontario. So this is a pretty significant issue. And they, they do help with flooding. Someone informed the minister or meeting, I can't remember who it was, that they're like the holding ponds that are in urban areas, in that they guide water and hold water and assist in managing it. So it's probably a critical part of climate change and should be treated as such. So what we did was we asked, we informed the minister first that we don't have the legal resources to challenge the railways. We noted that they are owned by, for the most part, by American interests. And we are under the impression that the federal government has deferred to the ministry as the one responsible for ensuring compliance. And so we asked the minister to, to confirm with the railways that they are subject to the Drainage Act. So the minister did agree to write them a letter. Roma and, and rural communities are worried because if, if the railways think that they're not subject to the Drainage Act, then what other public utilities will decide not to, or, or larger companies, telecommunications specifically. So with that, we then met with, so at that point, sorry, Minister Thompson, I didn't put this in the note, but Minister Thompson was asking for some motions to come from councils about the Drainage Act. And so I think you'll see a flurry of those in the next little while, and they'll be shared to, to inform our councils. And we did ask at the end of the meeting that the minister consider a review of the Drainage Act as there doesn't appear to be a section which specifically deals with penalties for people that don't, public utilities and railway companies. And so she has agreed that at some point in the next little while, she will be reviewing the act. And that likely will be part of a, part of the motion going forward from local councils. We then met with Doug Downey, the Attorney General, and you'll note the three requests. One was that there'd be some ability for the clerk to consider defense application, reopening conviction. All of these things were meant to save costs, but also to speed up justice. And then number two was a slight amendment to the Provincial offenses Act to allow the clerk to enter a conviction or withdraw it as part one and two. And number three was we need some meaningful dialogue between, with regards to POA reforms, noting that his ministry, the Ministry of Transportation and municipal and municipalities often don't seem on the same page. And how do, how do we fix that? The next minister that was with us, and each one of the ministers spent a half hour with us and answered questions. So it was for, it was a long day, it was a productive day, was Kinga Sirma, Minister of Infrastructure, and we complimented her on the work that she's done since she became the minister. Things have started to move fairly quickly. You'll note the funding history of four million and two point seven, five million from the province and the federal government respectively. And the challenge to have everybody get fifty-ten by twenty twenty-five. So our questions are, are seven of them. You can see them in front of you. First projects, what are the results of the auctions? What's happening with twenty, with the twenty twenty-five deadline and what role municipalities have in it, as we don't, we aren't expected to finance it anymore? And then what was happening with the small ISPs, that they won't get frozen out? And speaking, they suggested they speak with municipal public work staff and others to get some guidance on, on implementing this as quickly as possible. And then how do we use this investment to assist local municipalities in, in achieving some economic benefit and maybe even advantage? Review very quickly, the Roma response to strengthening the province's environmental compliance approach. You see A and B were the two, and C were the three things that we, we mentioned. Other information, we took a look at a staff paper on policy changes to the projection methodology guidelines noted. They were first put together in nineteen ninety-five and are primarily for larger urban centers, and so that they should take a look at it with a lens for rural Ontario and start listening to us. Short-term accommodation. Airbnb, and there's a series of problems across the problems or challenges with people coming in for a week and then moving on, and the owner's not, maybe not being absent and having absentee managers as well. So there is a series of best practices. Blue Mountain has a very nice licensing regime, which, you know, I think, I would think everybody would want to take a look at it if you're moving that way. So again, again, it was a mix of leading practices and specific community goals that we talked about, and it's included in the paper. And research paper. We're very excited about this. We started it in July, and I believe Counselor Dunn, who was part of one of their, one of their sessions, I'd submitted his name. So it's a recovery and growth plan for rural Ontario. We started talking about this three days into, I wouldn't say three days, but I think Kim will agree, it was three or four days into, or three or four weeks into COVID. Just rural Ontario has often been handicapped by a number of reasons, and broadband, access to broadband was one of them. Transportation, disappearing railways, you know, Renfrew County, in a lot of ways, mirrors what's going on, and it's probably been the canary in the coal mine for what's been going on in rural Ontario and especially northern Ontario in the last little while. So the, we started this in the spring and summer. It's a rural and growth plan. It's a growth and recovery plan for rural Ontario, addressing longstanding issues, capitalize on the opportunities, which have resulted from the pandemic, meaning more people are working at home. Some increased broadband capacity. And so we wanted to make sure we got every municipality taking a, taking a leading role on this with Roma. with Roma providing some, some information from this report. And getting involved with other stakeholders, the Rural Ontario Institute is one that we've spoken to, and there's other ones. The process, as you see, has been Zoom call, seventy-plus invitees were brought in, recommended by ourselves in the Rural Caucus. Economic sector, the not-for-profits and institutes were involved. And we tried to get a good geographic overview from across the province, and we think we did. There was a survey as well, and then what are the three most important challenges? Approach with residents, businesses, and municipalities. And three biggest opportunities was another question of what excites you the most? So we had a total of two hundred and forty-two responses. Next steps on the twelfth, we had a look at it. December three, the paper will be written. December ten, the Roma Board will review it. And in January, another quick spin through it, and then January twenty-fourth, it'll be presented at the conference. So with the conference, I can tell you that it's held January twenty-third to twenty-fifth. Chief Perry Belguard is a speaker, a featured speaker. We've got two ministers forums with, I think, fourteen ministers in each one. The four provincial leaders will speak, and the sessions, as you can see, there are nine of them. I am leading one, I can't remember which one it is. I believe it's number five. I'm sorry, I haven't read the background information on it yet. And I think, and I think Kim, I don't know if she knows what hers is, but I know she's getting one. With that, that's what I can submit on behalf of Counselor Love and myself.
All right. Thank you very much, Counselor Aimo, for this very informative and in-depth report. Any questions or comments for Counselor Aimo or Counselor Love? Counselor Donahue, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden. Very comprehensive report. So thank you to Counselor Aimo, and by extension, of course, to Counselor Love as well. The initial item is of particular interest. At one time, I think the township of Admas, who might have had the most municipal drains in the entire province of Ontario in a single municipality. There was no shortage of municipal drains as well in the former Bromley Township. So now, given the marriage, we have a substantial number of municipal drains in our municipality, I'm sure, as well does Counselor Regeare. These are of vital interest and concern to the agricultural community and the growing of food more broadly. It is terribly discouraging, regardless of perhaps the ownership of the railways. The report indicated that at one time, they were participating in the municipal drainage programs and have subsequently ceased to do that. You know, when I, when I see that, you know, it just, it signals bad faith. And it's asserting, you know, a federal jurisdiction in this issue, which is simply, in my estimation, a brazen attempt to evade responsibility. It also seems risible to me. I'm very, very pleased that Roma is going to take this on. While certainly, we know, and perhaps even the conversation raised earlier with respect to the Eeyorn Initiative, CRINS, the sighting of towers, et cetera, it has come to our attention in Admas to Bromley that this is within the federal purview. Once approved, there is little kind of authority, I guess, that the local municipalities have. However, the railroads seem to have conflated the federally owned or provincially owned properties that we all know and recognize as being subject not to taxation, but are annually in receipt of payment in lieu instead, but as private entities and thereby private landowners. They are not subject to that. This is simply a naked attempt to avoid responsibility. And very pleased that Roma is taking up the cudgel. With respect to the railroad component, I do question, and certainly I acknowledge that this, this has the potential to catch off guard and certainly would be prepared to defer to a future council meeting or perhaps DNP, FNA. In that, often, I think perhaps in the Railway Act, that abandoned railways do carry some of the obligations of railways, even when they cease to be railroads. I am just curious if this is one of those elements that does endure beyond when, when these, let us call them routes or rights of way, no longer are railways, but are utilized for other circumstances. And certainly, as council will be aware, that is, that would pertain to each of the Algonquin Trail or the KMP Recreation Trail. So just whether at this meeting or a future meeting, I would be curious to know that.
I don't know if Mr. Morrow can give you the answer today, or if he can search that down for us.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to Counselor Donahue. He's absolutely correct. There is some legislation on abandoned railways and the responsibilities. But off the top of my head, I do not recall the particulars. It's been some time since I reviewed that. But we could have a conversation with Mr. Davis, our manager of Forestry and Trails, who I understand is right on top of the legislation. So we could bring that back and get you an answer on what those responsibilities are.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Morrow. Are there any other comments or questions for Counselor Aimo or Counselor Love? Seeing none. If I have a mover and a seconder to accept the reports from Eeyorn, FCM, and Roma, please. Moved by Counselor Aimo, seconded by Counselor Love. Any further comments? Seeing none. All in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. That was very, very informative. I'm really pleased that we have this on our agenda at county council meetings. Are there any notice of motions, Mr. Morrow? Any members' written motions?
None, ma'am.
New business. I would just like to say that this is the last county council meeting of this, this year that I will be chairing. I do want to thank all of County Council for their support and patience with me throughout the year. Certainly, it's been very challenging, but very enjoyable and rewarding as well. Certainly, I'd be remiss if I didn't, you know, publicly thank Paul and Rose as well as the SLT team for their support and assistance, and quite honestly, their patience with me. Sometimes I can be a bit trying, I think. Mr. Morrow, look at that straight face going on. Anyway, thank you very, very much. I thoroughly enjoyed the last two years as your warden and look forward to twenty-twenty-two. But with that, we do have a closed session. I'm looking for a mover and a seconder that it be resolved, the council move into a closed meeting pursuant to Section two-three-nine of the Municipal Act two thousand and one, as amended, to discuss explicitly confidential information from senior government and personal matters about identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. I need a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Counselor Sweet, seconded by Counselor Regeare. Any questions? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. I need a mover and a seconder that the bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Council of County Red through at the meeting held on November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one. Be now numbered, deemed read three times and passed. A mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Counselor Love, seconded by Counselor Bruce. All in favor? Carried. There's only one last item on our agenda today. Counselor Murphy, would you like to move adjournment? Moved by Counselor Murphy, seconded by Counselor Rose. Any discussion? All in favor? Carried. Thank you very much, everyone. It was an exceptional year. Everyone worked very hard, our chairs, our committee members. Great job, everyone. Look forward to seeing all of you on December fourteenth, either in person or virtual.
Warden, again, thanks to council. Very much appreciated.